Welcome, everyone, to our last Common Council meeting for October. I hope everyone's having a great fall and are looking forward to, we've got election in a couple of weeks, so getting all geared up for that. At this time, Madam Clerk, will you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 16, 2024, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Very good. Thank you so much. A roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer.
Present.
Ms. Hamlet.
Here.
Ms. Calmenson.
Here.
Mr. Plouski.
Here.
Mr. Smallwood.
Ms. Toth.
Here.
President McTiernan.
Present. All right, I'm going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance because I love doing this in my school. All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. More people chimed in here than they do in my classroom. All right, Madam Clerk, will you please read the explanatory note regarding closed session hearings and comments?
A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channels 34 and 36, and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to thecityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit all to be heard, speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do I have a motion now to approve the regular enclosed session minutes for our meetings of October 7, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? I opposed.
Were they distributed?
They were.
I believe so.
Okay, I don't recall seeing them, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I sent, I can resend them if you want to hold off on the vote.
No, if they would.
Did everyone else see them?
You're good. Do you remember seeing them?
Yeah. I may simply have forgotten.
We can, if you wish.
No, it's fine. It's fine.
All right.
So seen an unanimous vote?
Yep. Okay, all right, at this time, we're at our report section of our meeting. Madam Mayor, do you have a report today?
Of course I do. Good evening, everyone. I want to start with a few community updates and a little Halloween spirit. Get your costumes ready for our Halloween parade coming up on October 25 from 3 to 5. The parade will begin at 25 to Forest Avenue in the parking lot behind the building and proceed to the Village Green, where we'll have music, entertainment, snacks, and of course, the costume contest. Participants should line up at 25 to Forest at 2:45 PM, and we will step off promptly at 3. It's always a great community tradition, so I hope to see you there. Also, make sure you head downtown and enjoy some sweet treats from our local businesses on Halloween Day from 2:30 to 4. The Summit Free Market will be open on Friday, October 24 from noon to 2 at the transfer station, drop off items that are in good condition but no longer needed, and maybe pick up a new treasure while you're there. Remember, you'll need a transfer station permit to access both the Free Market and the transfer station. All Summit residents can obtain one for $10 by showing proof of car registration on our website or in person at our Parking Services office. The permit is valid from November 1 to October 31, so it's time to renew if you have not done so. If you didn't get to watch our live Q&amp;A with City Administrator Tammy Baldwin, I highly recommend checking it out on our YouTube channel. She gave a great explanation about our budget process, which has already started, and it answers a lot of questions that we often get from our residents, so please take an hour and check it out. And last, please note that our next council meeting will be held on Wednesday, November 5 instead of Tuesday because of the general election on November 4. And for those planning to vote, the Memorial Fieldhouse polling location has been temporarily moved to Brayton Elementary School due to ongoing renovations. You can find all polling locations at cityofsummit.org/elections. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, our city administrator is on a well-deserved little family break, so we don't have a city administrator report. My council president report will be quick as well, just to update people on our round four obligations as I have over the last several meetings. Really not a lot of new information from our last meeting. We had a discussion with one of the developers, and it was very cordial, there was some back and forths, but no resolution. We remain somewhat far apart on what their proposal is and what, you know, where our zoning and density current ordinances that sit on our books are. So we're going to continue our discussion. Just as an update, we have two challenges to our plans from developers. One is for a 250-unit development at the end of River Road, where the current Wells Fargo site sits across from the Muni Golf Course. And our second challenge is from a developer who'd like to put 300 units on the Conoco Station, over the Conoco Station, which is across from the Village Green on Summit and Broad Street. That would be an eight-story building is the proposal. So we heard some serious discussions on hopefully getting that to change. And then, thirdly, we are being challenged by Fair Share, and we are negotiating with them as well. So, as I've mentioned on several occasions, this is a brand-new process. We thought there'd be one mediation session. We believe now there'll be a second one. We don't know when that is. We don't have further dates after that. But as we do hear information, we will make sure to inform the public. So, and that is my report. Okay, all right, now we're on to our historical minute. Councilman Plouski, do you have one this, this meeting?
Can I just say one thing, Council President? I did double-check, Rosie, you sent those minutes on October 17.
Yeah, thank you. Both of them.
I found them.
Historical minute?
Thank you. When thinking of Summit movie theaters, many hilltoppers lament the fact that we actually have no movie theater today. The clear view Beacon Hill 5 may come to mind for some. Located at the site of the old Crest Five-and-Dime store on Springfield Avenue, the Beacon Hill 5 operated from 1997 until 2013. And with an ownership change in 2013, it became Bowtie Cinemas until 2016. Now you know it as West Elm. Old-timers will surely mention The Strand, also on Springfield Avenue. Strand opened in 1925 and operated until 1986. I can recall a tedious three hours viewing Out of Africa in 1985 with my parents as plaster fell from the ceiling. When I finished my Twizzlers, I wanted out of that theater. Here's that site today. But there was another. The Lyric Theater opened on April 10, 1914, on the corner of Beechwood Road and Bank Street. I believe it was Summit's first moving picture theater. Here it is again, with a view facing north on Beechwood. In the circle, you can see Council President McTiernan's first car [laughter] as he made the drive from Basking Ridge to catch a matinee.
Touche.
In the middle of May 1951, The Lyric was running Walt Disney's Cinderella and Cecil B. DeMille's masterpiece Sampson and Delilah. Prices were a dollar or less to take in a movie back then. From the same issue of The Herald, it looks like The Lyric had a better lineup than The Strand that week. I don't think I ever heard of any of those movies. Later that month, The Lyric had a fire on May 26, 1951, and closed permanently thereafter. This photo is taken from atop the Bassett Building. Then, the Summit Herald published this picture, according to my 20th Century Summit: 100 Year History of the City, written by...
Something's happening here. Did you click something?
No.
You might have clicked the off button. There's a, there's a blank screen thing.
I did?
No, no. Probably on the...
Bob, did you turn something off there?
This was going so well, too.
I know. I'll figure it out. I gotta find it.
Pictures are so good.
There. I think we lost connectivity.
Okay, I think there was only one more picture, anyway. So that last picture that you saw was taken from atop the Bassett Building. The Summit Herald published that picture, according to 20th Century Summit: 100 Year History of the City, written by former Council President Edward S. Alcott in 1998. I can only speculate that the fire occurred during renovations that the Herald reported were to come earlier that month because the May 24, May 31, June 7, and June 14, 1951 issues of The Herald are missing from the pre-public libraries' archives. Perhaps Mr. Alcott borrowed them but never returned these primary sources when he wrote his book. Currently, okay, perfect. Currently, the sidewalk that stood under the old Lyric marquee is known as Lyric Park, and the Bank Street parking lot stands where perhaps a two-year-old Harold Baldwin, City Administrator Baldwin's dad, and/or some of his cousins ate popcorn and watched Cinderella in Technicolor. So in case you're ever wondering how Lyric Park got its name, it is not for the troubadours who entertain us every summer, it is a nod to Summit's rich history.
That was awesome. Thank you very, very much. I did not know that was how Lyric Park got its name. Thank you. All right, moving right along, we have a couple of presentations this evening. I don't see anyone from the Elks Club to talk about their project donation. That will be on our agenda later on, accepting their generous gift for Tatlock Playground. So we'll talk about that then. We do have two other presentations, though. The first one, I want to welcome Lisa Hibbs from Concord Energy Services, is going to give us an update on government aggregation, or government energy aggregation update that Councilman Smallwood spoke about at our last meeting. So, Ms. Hibbs, thank you.
Thank you very much. I know it's been a long time coming. For the record, my name is Lisa Hibbs. I am Director of Sales and Project Management, Government Sector, at Concord Energy Services, a division of Concord Engineering. We have been working with the Garden State Community Energy Cooperative, of which City of Summit is a participating member. The Borough of Lincoln Park is the lead agency. We had gone out to auction a couple of times, and unsuccessfully. Most recent was October 3. So we took you out on August 12, and we got close to the price to compare, but not close enough. So I know that it deflates, you know, the sales a little bit, but we did hold the auction open. We did not dismiss everybody. So it resulted in a 7% savings, on average, for residents. Unfortunately, the program will not start until March 2026, but fortunately, the program will start. So right now, our price with JC P&amp;L is 15.8 cents. That includes a two-cent, a two-penny reconciliation rate, or a two-mill reconciliation rate. The day that we took the auction pricing, we did not include that reconciliation rate because it does fluctuate. It was, and it was an artificial inflation of the actual BGS price, so we used 15.603 cents as our strike price, and Direct Energy came in at 14.46 cents. So the average resident in the co-op across all four towns, so it's the Borough of Lincoln Park, it's the City of Summit, Jefferson Township, and Mount Olive Township, are the participating members. On the average, usage comes in at 747 kilowatt-hours per month, so the average savings is around $8 per resident. We did get good pricing also on the green price. We have an option for residents to opt into a 100% green product. It is optional. They'd have to take action in order to opt into that. That price was 14.61 cents, or a 6% savings on average. So for those that want to take advantage of that, it's there. If residents do nothing, if they don't opt out, if they don't opt up, they'll be enrolled in that standard rate of 14.46. There's nothing that anyone needs to do right now. We're a little early in the process, just because we have that delayed start with, with March. So we will get the account detail from JC P&amp;L December 1st. We will then mail out information packets to all the eligible residents, eligible residents being anyone not in an individual contract with a third-party supplier, anyone that does not have net meters for solar, and anyone that did not permanently opt out in a previous round. Lincoln Park and Jefferson both had the program before, so we will honor those permanent opt-outs from eons ago. And also, if anyone has a time-of-day meter, on-peak, off-peak, different rates, we'll also sweep them out. They can always join if they want to, but if they're using their meters as they're set up and designed, we would actually cost them money by sweeping them in. So I'd like to quickly share a webpage. So Garden State Community Energy Co-op has a webpage. It's not, a lot of things are turned off right now because your residents can't do too much, but there is a write-up here about the award. There's also just a little graphic with the pricing. And as we scroll down, if you take no action, you'll be enrolled in the standard program rate. If you want to opt into the green, you'll have to take action. These buttons right here, these Opt-In, Change Program Rate, Opt-Out, they are deactivated right now because we don't even have the account list from JC P&amp;L. Once we have that list, once we get ready to do the mailing, those buttons will be turned on and activated, so people can use that. They can go directly to the website to opt out if they want to. They want to opt into the green, they would just click the Change Rate, Change Program Rate button. And if they don't get a packet, if they have, if they're on supply with their own individual supply, supplier, they can opt in. We would just encourage them to do a little due diligence, make sure that they're not going to get hit with any early termination penalties or things like that before they make the switch. And then toward the bottom, we have key dates. Right now, I'm working with all four towns to identify outreach dates, to do some town hall-style outreach presentations. We show a video. We will show that also in Spanish. We will also provide the information packets in English and in Spanish. And we will post all of that, the bottom, under Communications. Right now, there is about a six-page frequently asked question sheet for residents to take a look at, answers questions about, you know, certain things that happen, budget billing, what happens at the end of the contract term, those kinds of things. So all of that's posted, and I do want to show you what a populated website looks like. This is for the Sussex Warren Area Energy Cooperative. They went under contract on August 20th. Their program starts in December. Here's the button, here's what the buttons look like when they're, when they're active. If I click on Opt-Out, and then it just takes you from there. It's pretty self-explanatory, but also, here's the program video. And if you hit play, you'll hear my voice for 16 minutes. So, so this will be on your program webpage with your program detail in that video. And then here's a sort of just a quick list of everything, all the documents that we provide. So residents don't have to do anything. We will send that information packet out. Direct Energy will mail that on behalf of the cooperative, so at no cost to any of us. That will go out. Residents should have that in mailboxes by January 2nd. The 30-day opt-out period runs January 2nd through January 31st. During that opt-out period, nothing is happening with their account. It's still with JC P&amp;L. So they're making that, they're taking that time, coming to outreach presentations, watching the video, doing all of their due diligence to make that decision. Anyone that did not opt out at the end of that 30-day opt-out period, that's the list that we provide to JC P&amp;L and say, "These are the folks that we would like to have switched into that 14.46 cents through the Garden State Co-op." And then it won't be until March meter reads, which, by the way, start in February. They start February 26th and run through March 26th. So that's when accounts will actually be switched over to the program rate with Direct Energy. So residents won't see us on their bills until April, and it's a 19-month contract. And there is, if rates, if, if we find, I would hope, if we find that the Basic Generation Service price does dip below our program rate, if we get so lucky, we will go back to the supplier and suggest that they also reduce their rate. They can tell us, "No, we can't do that," in which case, we can, we can end the program early. We've done it once before in our 10-year history, but it has been done. So your contract does allow for that negotiation.
Great. Thank you. Any questions from, anyone on council for Ms. Hibbs?
I just want to, Lisa, can you talk about the engagement with the community in person?
Absolutely. Because this is your first time through, we highly recommend at least one, possibly two outreach presentations. You can have one at noon, you can do one the same day at 4:00. Perhaps at Senior Community Center or at the community center in town. You can do it in advance of a council meeting, however you want to do that, but we do suggest doing at least one town hall-style face-to-face kind of a meeting, just so that folks understand that it really is something that the City of Summit got behind, does not profit from in any way, does not pull away any resources from the city either. We will also do a couple of Zoom presentations, but sometimes when you're logging into Zoom, you're not sure exactly who's running the Zoom meeting. So having those in-person meetings mean a lot, especially your first time through.
Yeah, and in addition, we can link all this information to our city website as well.
Absolutely.
So we can do that. So I just had a couple of questions before I talked more in, more general. So, given that we don't start till March, when do you anticipate these mailers might go out? Would that be in January or before?
January 2nd is our target date for in-mail boxes. It might be a few days before. Our target with the printer, with the, with the mailhouse, is December 22nd. It will take them a minute to print them, and then it will take our U.S. Postal Service, I don't know how long, to deliver them. So we give them a lot of time to get those delivered.
All right. And just to be clear, when, when you say they'll see your name on the bill, they're still getting a bill from JC P&amp;L. Nothing's going to change from that perspective. They get it in the mail, if they want to pay it the way they pay it, all that remains completely constant. It's just the, the provider of the energy through the JC P&amp;L pipeline changes.
Perfectly put, yes. And if anyone is on an assistance program for their utility bill, that stays the same as well. So, yeah, we don't, when we get the information from JC P&amp;L, I just want everyone to, to be aware, the only information that JC P&amp;L shares is a 20-digit customer number, the account holder name, the mailing address, and the service address for that account. We don't have phone numbers, we don't have financial information, we don't have emails. So just wanted to make residents aware that the information is very limited, and it's also protected from discovery under Oprah requests. So that is insulated from that as well.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from council? Councilman Pulowski?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hibbs. And I also just want to take an opportunity to thank Councilman Smallwood for his persistence in bringing this energy aggregation program to Summit and the 7% savings that our residents will begin to realize in March. He also asked me to encourage residents to consider opting into the green program, which will lower your savings, but only slightly, and will pay dividends in preserving the environment.
Good point. Other comments? Yeah, I just would wrap up two things. One, when Councilman Smallwood approached me about this last year, I was a big proponent of this when I was on council a long time ago. You know, this is, look, we, it's no surprise to anyone that our energy bills have gone up a lot over the course of the last year or so. And, you know, can argue whose fault it is, but a lot of this, you know, it's government policies create problems, and we've, we're paying for it. However, government can sometimes fix things. And this is an aggregation program that the government put together about 15, 20 years ago to allow municipalities to aggregate their, to, to bid for, for energy, rather than the poor little mom, you know, individual fighting the big utility companies. Now it's thousands and thousands of people who can aggregate their bid to get, get lower prices. So it was a great idea. Sometimes the markets work, sometimes they don't, and back in the teens, when we looked at this before, it kind of, the arbitrage went away. But now it's back, and I think this is a fantastic thing. You know, look, on an average utility bill of, you know, maybe this is going to save you 90 bucks a year, I'm happy with 90 bucks. It's better than not having 90 bucks. And, and again, this is something that residents really don't need to do anything on. It's, their life will not change. And as I mentioned, or as Councilman Pulowski mentioned, for those who want to make a green option, your savings will be a little bit less, but you get 100%, you know, green energy production, too, and save money off your energy bill, your current energy bill. So that is a win-win. And I, I want to thank Councilman Smallwood for really driving this. This has been, what, almost a year?
The co-op was formed in 2023, and shortly thereafter, I believe, we came to Summit, yeah. So it's been, it's been a little slow-going.
Yeah, and, and so this is, you know, this takes persistence and patience and such, and we're not through with the process yet. As Ms. Hibbs says, there's, there'll be outreach to the community. We'll have several of these open houses or community outreach things, so people can be very, very comfortable that nothing will really change for them. If, if they so choose to do nothing, they'll be opted in, and they always have the option. If they don't want to save the 90 bucks on average, they don't need to. It's a free country, so you can, you can opt out if you want.
You can give it back to the Basic Generation Service Providers.
Exactly right. I did want to read something. Councilman Smallwood is away for a, he's got a family medical issue, so we're praying for that. But I did want to say, he, he did give me a statement to say, he said, "I just want to take a moment to thank Ms. Hibbs for all of her hard work on this project. We've been working on energy aggregation for over a year, and I'm thrilled to see it moving forward. In today's high-cost energy environment, saving residents about 7% on their bills really makes a difference." I agree. Every bit of relief helps. And when you combine this with the solar presentation, stay tuned, we're about to have, "It's, it's clear we're just not lowering costs, we're also reducing our carbon footprint and moving Summit towards a more sustainable future. Thank you again to everyone involved for helping make this possible for our residents." And I echo those sentiments. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We've got a sec, on our, on our agenda, this is our third presentation. This is entitled, "Exploring the Viability of Solar Projects on City Property." We've got Bill Kine from Bespoke Energy, who's going to, Bespoke Energy Solutions, I'm sorry, is going to speak, and Scott Clark Shabe from Sodel Partners.
I have a clicker here for you, so you can advance the slides when you need to. There you go.
Yeah, just make sure you don't turn it off.
Just look on the side, make sure, the lights are on. Okay, so I think right-left advances, yeah.
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Kine, actually, there's no L.
Did I miss it?
And I'm with Bespoke Energy Solutions. We are a solar development and EPC company. I personally am a longtime resident of Summit. We've been in our home on Locust Drive for 26 years. My wife and I were both born at Overlook. My kids are successful products of the Summit High School, or the Summit School System. Bob, I think I saw that movie with you, At the Strand. So we're joined also tonight by Dr. Scott Clark Shabe of Sodel Partners, also a longtime resident of Summit. We've had conversations over the years with various members of council and the communities independently. Scott and I don't know each other.
We met tonight.
We did.
Or did we?
Yes. But we've had independent conversations with various members of council and the community about bringing solar to Summit for years, and so when we were asked by Councilman Smallwood and Councilman Pulowski to come in tonight and make a presentation, we both jumped at the idea. We are staying very high-level. We're not getting into the nuts and bolts of, you know, the ins and outs of finance. I also have my business partner, Ryan Small, Ryan Malgrib with us. He is a licensed electrical engineer, so if you have any technical questions that are above my pay grade and out of Scott's league as well, Ryan can jump in. So with that said, we have a quick, brief presentation to bring on. It was shared with me that you recently had a study done by a third-party consulting firm on an overall roadmap for solar and energy, which included battery stor, battery storage systems. It's a long-range play. So the concept that had been kicked around was, where can we start? What's a, what's a reasonable starting point? And after, you know, ad hoc conversations, we, we realized that the rec center is a good place to look at, just to consider the viability of the project. So we did a layout, and this is just a conceptual design. This can change. We haven't done any engineering. We're not, we're here as residents who are trying to help and advise the city. So, oh, I'm responsible for this, right? Play or something?
That's it.
Yeah, you advanced.
Okay. All right. So what is the opportunity of solar? There are numerous incentives, but basically, it allows the city to leverage municipal assets to put in solar arrays, whether that's on top of municipal buildings, parking lots, open space, wherever you can possibly find it. This particular project would be roughly 169 kilowatts, which would fully offset the power usage, the energy usage of that building. So all the energy that is created, that is required for that building over the course of a year could be offset with a system of this size. It's a strategic investment that you're able to take advantage of state incentives, federal incentives, to offset the cost of this and minimize taxpayer impact. which would fully offset the power usage, the energy usage of that building. So all the energy that is create, that is required for that building over the course of a year could be offset with a system of this size. It's a strategic investment that you're able to take advantage of state incentives, federal incentives, to offset the cost of this and minimize taxpayer impact. Additionally, there is, did I didn't have PPA on here? You, you can, you have budgetary control. You'll fix, you'll have fixed costs locked in for a long period of time. So as a previous speaker mentioned, the cost of energy is going through the roof. And you can protect against that, and you can protect the budget against that. So how do we get there? What, how does solar work is ultimately what we wanted to get across tonight. There are numerous incentives available which make solar viable. It's why every major logistics company is putting it on their warehouse. It's why you park under them when you go to various municipal buildings. It's, the economics work. And the reason the economics work is because the federal government believes in this, despite what we may or may not hear or believe. But there is a 30% tax credit, which is a direct credit of 30% of the cost of a project that a solar, that you can realize in the first year that that solar project is producing. For a municipality like Summit or any other nonprofit who doesn't have tax appetite, there are alternative ways that you can realize that gain. The federal government provides for a direct pay option where you can directly get a 30% check from the government. Sorry. In addition to that, on the federal end of things, there is accelerated depreciation on the system. So again, we didn't model out, and you know, we don't share the, the cash flows and the ROIs on this. But, you know, if you get to that, and that's the next step, if there's interest, it becomes very apparent that these things pay for themselves, in some cases in less than four years. And they pay for 15, 20 years and beyond. On the state side of things, in New Jersey specifically, every state has different incentives. In New Jersey specifically, there's, it's, they call it the SREC or the Solar Renewable Energy Certificate. It's now the SO, the SUSE program, which is, we're in the second program. It's the successor program. And what that does is it's a fixed incentive that pays directly to the owner of the solar system, a certificate that's worth $110 for, per thousand kilowatt hour of energy that's generated. So depending on what you're generating and producing, the state is going to pay you $110 per thousand kilowatt hours. That's substantial and that's fixed over a 15-year period. In addition to that, on the state side, you get accelerated depreciation as well. So those benefits alone make solar attractive. In addition to that, and this is, I think, what the city would be most interested in, in speaking, you know, with Bob and with Kevin, Councilman Palowski and Councilman Smallwood, is there's something called a PPA. It's a power purchase agreement. It's a mechanism that allows a third party to purchase and own the asset, the solar system. There's a nominal lease agreement that is put together for the roof space, you know, a dollar a year, whatever it may be. And Scott can speak to this better than I can. Scott's on the PPA side of things. So I'll run through this and then I'll let you. But basically, the PPA would buy, own, maintain and operate the system. They would then take all of those benefits. So the tax credit, they'd take it. They'd collect the SRECs for 15 years. They'd take the depreciation on the system. And then in addition to that, they would then sell the power, the energy that's generated by the solar system to the city at a discounted rate versus what you would pay to the utility. Now, over the course of the next 15 years, who knows what the rates are going to be? With a PPA agreement, you have a fairly fixed.
Yeah, fixed.
Fixed rate of what your utility is going to cost. There may be a nominal, a nominal escalator that's built into the PPA agreement that every year, a certain, you know, small percentage is increasing the PPA rate. But it's known, it's fixed, and it's how, for the period of time of that contract. So again, the, the PPA would take over all the planning, buy the system, contract with the developer, do all that work. They would finance the installation, pay for it, however they're going to do that. But then going forward, the city has no responsibility to maintain that system. If a solar panel goes down, an inverter stops working, it's not reporting properly, the operation and maintenance of that system, the city doesn't have to worry about it. That's on the PPA. They own the system. They maintain it. Additionally, you know, we talked about the savings. The PPA can monetize the system, but then at the end of the term, that's frequently asked question, when you reach the end of the PPA period, what happens? I've got this old solar system. We're at the end of the PPA period, and there's a number of ways that it's handled. You can extend the PPA if, you know, both parties want to keep it going. You can renegotiate and extend it. In a lot of cases, depending on the contract, in this case, the city could potentially purchase the system at current market rates 15, 20 years from now. Now, Scott, I don't know, 15, 20 years from now, I don't know what a 15 or 20-year-old system is going to be worth in the open market. Probably nothing. So that's one thing. And then, you know, lastly, you could require the PPA to remove the system from, from the asset of the town. So at a high level, the benefits of a PPA for Summit is you've got no upfront capital cost. You've got budgetary certainty for whatever the period of the term is. You're reducing your energy bill, you know, on a percentage basis, ballpark in it? 30 to 50%. And you have no risk. And one of the important things to mention, but when you start talking solar, the economics always start to get in the way of the fact that it supports the sustainability goals that the city might have. And, you know, the environment and, and all of the environmental benefits that come along with that, which would include, you know, obviously a reduced carbon footprint, cleaner air. You're not burning fossil fuels, so you're not putting the same pollutants into the air. It supports your clean energy goals. And also, it, it's visible, you know, especially if you have a carport or even if you don't have a carport and it's on a roof, there's indicators that Summit is green. We have solar. We're, we're, you know, it's, it's a visible signal to the community and to our visitors that we're participating in this. And we are in sort of a world right now where, from my perspective, if you're not participating in it, you should be. So Scott, do you want to chime in at all?
I'll piggyback on that. Yes, I'm Scott Clark Shab, Summit resident for.
Scott, just speak into the microphone.
For 16 years now and came into this, this is not my primary job. Came into this looking to put solar on my own house and realized the economics of it just did not make sense. So got together with a couple of buddies who are like-minded, who had already started doing it, and, you know, pooling funds to finance solar arrays and the more commercial level as opposed to residential. Bill has stolen a lot of my thunder, but it's rare that you have situations that are such, at least in my opinion, win, win, wins in terms of no upfront costs for the community. I mean, fundamentally, and he got to this a little bit, the best deal financially is for Summit to do it themselves. But for a project like this, that's a $300,000 or $400,000 outlay probably, depending on how you define it. Carports are more expensive. You know, that's a lot of money to go into an already tight budget. Our goal is to finance those projects, to get them going, to, you know, number one, participate in the green initiative in this town. It's really important. I love the, the community aggregator. That's a great start. And piggybacking on your last point of showing that Summit is green. Actually got into it online about, I don't know, five or seven years ago, being like, we need to advertise our, our home values are maintained by younger people from the city coming in here and buying houses. And those people are going to be more involved and interested in solar. And sending that message of having solar on our municipal buildings, having solar ideally on our schools, having carports, sends that message to the greater area of this is a community that welcomes you, recognizes our place in society and is doing something about our environment. Yes, there is benefit for my partners and me, but I can tell you, if this was a coal-fired plant, I would not be standing in front of you advocating for a cold-fired plant to save money for Summit, New Jersey. I believe in solar. I believe we have, you know, real problems we need to address. This does not solve all of them, but certainly every little bit helps. So I'm here to answer questions. Obviously, there are, you know, concerns. I mean, I have participated in the Summit, in the Environmental Commission meetings pre-COVID. And there, everybody was like, what's the catch? I'm like, there really isn't one. How much does it cost? Doesn't cost the Summit Council anything. It just costs access to your roofs, which can be a very valuable asset. You know, it just, electricity spends about $30,000 a year. You know, if you can cut that 30 to 50%, you know, that's real money. You know, it's not going to build the next school, but every little bit counts. What was my other issue? I don't know. I'm here to entertain questions, anything you'd like to hear more about. Again, I.
I want to chime in real quick. This last slide, I choked a little bit there.
Bill, just speak into the microphone.
This, this tells you what the economic benefits, according to the EPA's Greenhouse Gas Equivalency Calculator, putting this solar system in would be the equivalent of removing 3,400 tons of CO2 from the environment over the course of the system's lifetime. Removing 7.7 million miles on the road. Or talk about a, a big impact, and I'll steal some of your thunder here now. You know, planting 51,000 trees. We, we, we love the Little Forest Project. We love our green spaces. 51,000, equivalent of 51,000 trees. It's, it's impressive. So.
And this is a tiny project. You do something at the school. It's probably 10 times the size of that. That's obviously down the way. But this is a relatively small project that can have real impact. Following up on one issue, what do you do with the system at the end? Generally, the PPAs run 15 years. That's when the tax credit expires and, you know, we as investors have gotten the most value out of it. But the systems last 25 years, sometimes 30. At 15 years, it's usually, it is gifted and then the town maintains it. And you're saving that $27,000 a year and $25, $25 in electrical costs for another 10 years. Yes, it costs maybe $15,000 to $20,000 to remove the system, but at that point, you need a new roof anyway. And it's, you know, part of the budget. And hopefully we have something better, more efficient that will continue the, the green initiative in Summit.
Great. Thank you. I just had a couple of questions before I open it up. You, you mentioned this just at the end. What if there is an issue with the roof? Like, say, we're at the rec center and the roof starts leaking. Is, do you guys own the roof or do we, who fixes it?
There are no, for a roof like this, on the flat roofs, there are no penetrations. That's all negotiations. I mean, we have some contracts with places where we're on the hook for the roof. If there's a penetration, if there's no penetrations and they had existing, an issue that wasn't related, you know, we have those details in the contract of who pays the cost of pulling it off, who pays the cost of putting the panels back on. You know, if the roof is an existing roof issue, then that's sort of on the town. We're not buying the whole roof.
During the installation process, depending, you know, the flat roof here, it looks like it's probably a TPO rubberized roof. In the installation process, whoever the installer is, is going to go to the roofing manufacturer, Carlisle GAF, do a roofing certification, make sure that the warranty is not voided. The contractor who does the work is going to certify the workmanship, and then the roofing warranty is going to be in place for whatever that, there's nothing that's voiding any warranty work. So then beyond any warranty, that would be contractual between the PPA company and the city as to how those types of issues are handled. Because it's one of those things where the PPA doesn't want to be responsible for something that's not a solar issue, but at the same point in time, the city needs to be protected in case there is something that is a solar issue. But you'd be surprised, for as many millions and millions of solar panels as there are on the roof, it's really not a big problem. It's, it's been dealt with. So.
But I also think our, our interests are aligned in our relationships in terms of, we want the solar power working so that we can maximize our revenue. You want the solar working because you want to maximize your savings. And you want the roof to be clean so you'd, you know, not have any issues. So most of the time, we're able to, you know, the all ships rising mentality and have our interests aligned such that, you know, you can maximize the benefit of the solar array.
Right. And then, so, and this is just, I guess I'm just curious how this would work. We're talking, this is just the array on the roof, but this isn't like a storage system or what have you. So we would contract out for, you know, X, you know, pennies per kilowatt with you guys. And then we get that price when, you know, it's, you know, when we got rec basketball in there at 7:30 at night and there is no sunup. The, the lights are on. So, so that's, so we would have the energy, no matter 24/7, cloudy days, winter days, sunny days. You would provide the energy at that contracted price for the next, whatever, 15 years in, in your example. Is that correct?
Your energy provider provides the energy, you know, so that doesn't change. We're just adding it. Some of it's going into the system when the sun is out. And then you're drawing more from the, your, when the sun is out, the system, you're using the energy there. When the sun is down, you're pulling from the grid. And you get a one for one.
We can, and we can pull Ryan up here. If we, there's a concept of net metering. And what I tell people is, think of the grid as your battery. When you're producing energy during the day and the kids are all in school and there's nobody in that gym and the lights are off and it's producing and it's pumping out power, it's putting it onto the grid and you're being net metered. You're accumulating credits with the utility.
Okay, that's how it works. All right.
Once night rolls around and you're buying the power off the grid, those credits are being applied to offset the cost of the power that you, or the energy that you're pulling off the grid. So it's, again, it's an oversimplification, and Ryan, correct me if that's a bad one, but I, I said, think of, think of the utility and the grid as your backup. You're charging it when you're not using the power. And then you're pulling it from the grid when you're not creating power. So, and it, it aggregates over the course of a year.
Right. Okay. And then one, the last question I have is, you mentioned this a couple of times, solar arrays over parking decks and things like that. We have a few of those in town. But this is something that you've seen municipalities do on the top floor of decks and things like that also?
Yeah, I mean, we've seen municipalities do it. I mean, private entities do it. And if you've ever gone to the top deck of the Short Hills Mall, you've parked under them. I mean, this is, this is, this is pretty well-baked and, and developed technology. And it's, we can do, we can do that on these parking decks, definitely.
Great. Thank you.
I mean, it all, I'll follow that up with, the canopies are probably at least twice as expensive to put it on your roof. So it doesn't cost the municipality anything upfront, but it's reflected in the rate that you pay in your power purchase agreement. So if it's all canopy, the savings would probably be minimal. I mean, there's benefit and you get a canopy out of it. You get your garage covered and you have some chargers with it. But the reality is, you know, it might be a 10% savings on your electric bill, which isn't nothing. And we're still doing good for the envi- isn't nothing, and we're still doing good for the environment, but those sorts of, the canopies are expensive, as opposed to just putting it on your roof, your flat roof.
Got it. Okay. Any other questions or comments from council? Councilwoman Pulowski?
Yeah, just one quick question. You guys could include in a deal like this, charging stations, right?
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, so, becoming standard protocol, especially for municipalities.
So, you know, with, with the rise of electric cars and that percentage is just going to keep growing, I think it's an important benefit to our infrastructure as a city to have places where people can charge their electric vehicles.
Yeah, and we've, I've, I've worked on projects in the past with other municipalities, specifically down in Shore towns in South Jersey, where they're using them as revenue streams. You know, you're putting in level one chargers, you're not going to do level two if you, where they're going to charge quickly, and they put their credit card in and they pay. So, you know, there's, there's lots of options you can do with it. But again, just like a carport, the cost of those is going to get built into the PPA, and it will be built into that rate that you're going to pay for the power from the PPA.
All right. I would say, one quick follow-up, but those, they can be a real revenue generator. Anybody who has an electric car and charges it, you can, they charge it 35 to 50 cents per kilowatt hour to charge. So, that's a good, you know, you can make four times your money. You're paying nine or 10 cents per kilowatt hour with your solar, or 15 from, from the grid, and you're able to charge 35 or 40.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Councilwoman Boyer?
Uh, thank you for your presentation. Councilman Smallwood has been talking about this for the last three years since I met him, and I never actually gave it a second thought until I was driving up to Vernon to go to Mountain Creek, and Sparta High School has solar panels, where I think they're canopies actually, because they have the room for it. And so they have a 15-year plan to save $8 million. And I've always imagined, like, how are they paying for all of those panels? I mean, they have like hundreds, it's crazy. So thank you for your presentation, and now I kind of understand what the give and take is. And not getting into the granular details of it, you know, I'd like to see the numbers, but I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, especially for the high schools and the schools in general, so.
Yeah. New Providence High School has it. They've had it for like 10 years on their roof. We're sort of behind the times.
Chatham has it too.
This is not a new idea.
Yeah, not at all.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, well, gentlemen, thank you so much for your presentation. Appreciate it. Exciting stuff. All right, we're now on to our business part of our meeting, and we've got an ordinance for introduction. We have one for safety and health. Madam Clerk, will you please read Safety and Health Ordinance for Introduction 12214?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8, Parking, Subsection 7-8.7, Parking prohibited at all times on certain streets.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Boyer?
Thank you, Council President. Again, this is ordinance number 12214. The purpose of this ordinance is to enhance traffic safety, improve accessibility, and to address concerns related to congestion and pedestrian safety. If you look in your packets, we have one street that is Weaver Street, and this is, when you're, when you're coming out of the high school and you want to make that left or that right, there's cars parked there, and you can't see. I mean, it, this was, on Weaver Street, this was a, a no-brainer. We used to have some signs up, and we decided to make it permanent. And also, there are, there are kids crossing that cul-de-sac there, really hard to see, so this is good to prevent that. The next one is Bedford to Morris. This is the oratory side. We used to have stakes up for no parking. Again, it was a no-brainer to make this one, no parking from Bedford to Morris Avenue. The next one is New England Avenue. So this is by Christ Church. So if you ever tried to come out of the parking lot at Christ Church, you can't see. So once again, we are improving pedestrian safety by having no parking there. Also, there are townhomes there as well, and again, it's hard making the left or the right, and to prevent no parking there is pedestrian and motor vehicle safety issue. The last one that we have is Ashland or Ashwood and Park Ave and Broad Street. So this is by Azukar, I'm going to plug Azukar, they have great food there. Once again, parking on that side of the street will improve pedestrian safety and congestion. It gets really congested over there. So to make that a permanent no parking, once again, is a, is a great move. And Council President, I move this ordinance for a hearing that will be on November 5th.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Boyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
Aye.
Ms. Cammison?
Aye.
Mr. Pulowski?
Aye.
Ms. Toth?
Aye.
President McTiernan?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, that's it for ordinances. We're on to resolution portion of our meeting. We have a few from finance. Councilwoman Toth, finance number one.
Okay, thank you, Council President. The New Jersey Best Practices Inventory is a program created by the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs to encourage good management, transparency, and fiscal responsibility within municipalities. The inventory program uses a scoring system to measure how well a municipality follows the recommended management and fiscal practices. And the total score determines whether the municipality receives full or partial state aid in the form of the consolidated municipality tax relief and the emerging tax relief. For 2025, Summit has attained the required inventory score to receive full funding. To complete the process, Administrator Baldwin, or, for, for, for having done this, Administrator Baldwin and the entire City Hall team deserve recognition. They've done a great job. And to finish the process of receiving the state aid, the completed inventory form must be a discussion item at a council meeting, and the city clerk must certify that the inventory was publicly discussed. So Resolution 12178 fulfills that requirement. With that, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. All right, does any member of the public wish to comment on this resolution? Okay, any one, member of council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Finance number two, Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. Resolutions 12230 and 12229 will have separate hearings and votes, but they make the most sense to explain together. Two meetings ago, I previewed the large jump in 2026 health insurance premium, premiums for the state health benefits program. That program is in deep financial trouble, and municipalities that can afford to leave it to join other health insurance programs are doing so. Leaving the SHPB requires 60 days written notice, so by the end of this month. And unfortunately, Summit's recent insurance usage doesn't make us attractive to many alternatives. Megan Champney Quezalate, our Human Resources Manager, has worked on this for months. She recommends, and the Finance Committee agrees, that our best option is to join the New Jersey Solutions Joint Health Insurance Fund. The immediate cost savings won't be great. Instead of 2026 premiums rising 35.61% under the state plan, they're only going to rise 33.1% under the joint insurance fund. However, belonging to the fund will give us more control over spending, more data transparency, and more education and resources for city employees. The expectation is that over time, this will temper the rise in health insurance costs. And so with all that said, Resolution 12230 will terminate our participation in the state health benefits program. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. All right, would any member of the public like to comment on this resolution? Okay, members of council?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Boyer?
Now I no longer work there, I can talk about it. I, I used to work for Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shill, New Jersey, and we would fight for the state health benefit contract all the time with other insurers. It is not a profitable thing, it's just the number of members. State Health Benefits is in dire trouble. I, I don't know what the future looks like for state health benefits, and we don't even know, and they can't tell us. From what I gather, it looks like a 30% increase, which is, it's just un, it's unaffordable. So, when Councilwoman Toth called me and said, hey, we have a, we have a new plan, I said, absolutely, anything is better than state health benefits, right? So, I, I, I am full on board with this plan. And the, the one thing I did ask was, would there be any issues with prescriptions, right? We don't want employees coming back saying, you know, I couldn't get my diabetes medicine, right? And that was not going to be an issue. So they still have the same type of prescriptions, same type of health plan that they had, it's just that we now have a discount and more visibility into what type of prescriptions and, and health plans that they're getting. So, I totally agree with this. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Hamlet?
I would just like to say, I, I absolutely agree. I had a ton of questions that I've asked in the last couple of days, so thank Council Member Toth for doing that, and Megan for all her hard work on that. We do have the luxury of having our former city administrator at the Division of Local Government Services sitting on the State Health Benefits Committee now, which I think is helpful in our discussions with him to formulate this decision. And I would say that one thing that Mr. Giacobi mentioned tonight is that it will allow him, once we join the JIF, to really negotiate better terms on our behalf. So I just want to say thank you to everybody for all your hard work on this.
Thank you. Other comments? Yeah, I'll just wrap it up saying, like, I think Councilwoman Toth mentioned, where the real benefits from this are going to accrue will be forward. You know, it's not a big headline number, but it's not just for the city to be able to, to craft plans, to have a lot more flexibility on what they're going to offer employees. It also has more services for employees here. You know, the state plan has a website. Now employees will be able to go talk to, provide, the providers get counseling on their best options and things like that. So you get a lot more for it as well, than when you, you know, join this private company. So I'm, I'm all for it, too. Something we had to give, like, I, I think as Councilwoman Boyer and Councilwoman Toth put out, the state health plan may not be here in a year or two. And if you're, if you're literally that person on the sinking ship, then it's really hard to get off. So I think this is a pretty prudent move as well. So, I support this also.
Council President, just one other thing. When, when you're in the state health benefits plan, the unions and management can't negotiate over the terms. And that makes really no sense, because your employees are contributing towards the health benefits, some of them up to a third of the cost of the benefits. So if you have a plan that is costing now $60,000, and employees paying $20,000, that's something that employees and the bargaining units want to negotiate over. When you're outside of the state health benefits, you can with unions negotiate changes. When you're in it, you cannot. So it gives your employees more flexibility too, to be part of the solution, as opposed to just getting these, 20% increase last year, 35% this year.
That's crazy. Okay, no other comments? Does he call for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Councilwoman Toth, I know you talked about finance number three.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 12229 is the second of the resolutions needed to leave the state health insurance program and join the New Jersey Solutions Joint Health Insurance Fund, and it authorizes us to join the fund. So I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, finance number four, Councilwoman Toth.
Okay, thank you, Council President. Resolution 12179 authorizes us to retain our bond council for 2026 at a cost not to exceed $60,000. We have worked with the same firm since 2016. They know us, they have kept our costs steady, and they've done a great job for us over the years. We've been able to issue our debt at very low interest rates with their help, so I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, last finance resolution, number five, Councilwoman Toth.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution 12068 grants tenure to our tax collector Patricia Dockerty. Tax collector is one of the positions state law mandates every municipality to have, making it eligible for tenure. Ms. Dockerty has done a terrific job for Summit, witnessed our 99% collection rate. She more than deserves to be tenured. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second. Comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet?
I would just like to say, well deserved, and congratulations. I think that's really excited for her, and couldn't be, couldn't be more excited to pass this tonight.
Thank you. Other comments? I would just echo that. Patty does a great job. I mean, that, that, that number of 99% paid taxes, a lot of municipalities don't get that. A lot of them are in the 80s and 90s, where, and it really crimps your ability to plan and budget. We're extremely fortunate to have someone, Patty calls, she works with people, I think she's very pleasant, you know, you get a call, pay your taxes, you know, people are very, actually happy to hear from her, because she works with them. So we're, we are very, very lucky to have her, and, and I'm happy that she's going to be up for tenure. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have one safety resolution this evening, safety number one, Councilwoman Boyer.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 12215, and I am happy to introduce the three newest members of our police department. Nathan Bueno, who comes to us from Bergen County Sheriff's Office, Brian Kavanaugh, who's currently in the academy, and Eleo Saraguso. You may know his uncle, Tony Saraguso, who used to play football, right? Rest in peace, Tony. These young men, I'm happy to say, were extraordinary in their interviews. I do not know how the Summit Police Department finds the best of the best in the state. It may be because we have the best police department in the state, and people want to work here, because our residents like our police officers. They actually wave to them. They've actually said that in interviews, like, you know, residents like us here, we want to come and work here in Summit. I think also, we may have the youngest police department in the state of New Jersey. I will definitely research that. I move this resolution for adoption.
Second.
All right, comments from the public?
Hi, good evening. Tom Zieber, 768 Springfield Avenue. I'd just like to express my gratitude to this council, as I anticipate you're going to pass this resolution allowing for the appointments of three new officers to the Summit Police Department this evening. I know there are some residents in town who believe the direction of the department should be tech-forward, but I believe there's no substitute for top-notch officers. And don't get me wrong, technology's wonderful. I favor the implementation of tools like the license plate readers our council implemented in recent years, but technology can't develop relationships with residents. The Summit PD is a respected and valued part of this community. Our police force's combination of sound judgment, empathy, and discretion can't be replaced by technology, and their presence in our community is itself a crime deterrent. So I congratulate these officers on their appointments, thank them for their commitment to keeping Summit safe, and look forward to seeing them around town. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? All right, comments from council? All right, no, I, I would agree with that resident, you know, the, it's one, one piece of the puzzle to, to keep people safe, and it's important, obviously, very, very important one. I'm happy with these three appointments. We will have our org chart filled out, is that correct, Councilwoman Boyer?
Yep.
Which is, which is great. They're young, and, you know, again, I think, I want to thank Safety Committee and our police department, you know, through this multi-pronged approach, including with law and labor, where we- and labor, where we've added police officers, we've invested in technology, and we've passed ordinances to make our community safer. And as we've heard from the couple of presentations that the chief has given, the numbers speak for themselves. Crime has, has gone down, and we should be proud of the police, and happy that they're doing such a wonderful job. So, I applaud this resolution.
Council President, I just want to know one thing.
Yeah.
And the public may not know this, but the police department has not had a, a full staff in almost a decade. There, we may have it in this January, fingers crossed, you know, I pray that none of our officers go out and get hurt, but that's, that's an interesting stat, right? In an entire decade, we haven't had all of our sworn officers on the job. So, when we, when we talk about adding police officers, you have to think about the two or three that are not on the job in one year, right? It's, it's, it adds stress. So, adding four new officers really takes the stress off of our police officers, and I am just so happy that we were able to get this done. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're on to community programs and parking services. Councilman Palowski.
Thank you. This is Resolution ID 12227, to authorize the submission and acceptance of grant applications for the community building, sorry, for the Community Development Block Grant Year. The two resolutions are for the senior connection bus, and for the Share the Fund Club, both for the Department of Community Programs. I move to pass this resolution.
Second.
All right, comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilwoman Hamlet.
No, I would just like to say, we get this typically every year or so, and it is important. This bus is great for, not only the seniors at the Housing Authority, but also seniors within the community can request this bus. I was speaking with David today, so. But seniors from, throughout the community can also request the use for this bus if they call the Department of Community, Department of Community Programs before 8:00 AM. So, I just think it's a nice service for our seniors, and just a nice job. I think there'll be a public hearing about that as well, or meeting?
I think this is a public hearing.
Is it? Okay, maybe this is it.
Thank you. Other comments? Yeah, these are the, the monies that help provide services. I mean, the, the senior bus, I think that used to be funded by the Junior League way back when, and over the years, it got harder and harder to do, and the Junior League started doing other things, and they, they're a great organization, and the city kind of took the senior bus on itself, and you've got to pay for it. And these are different ways to, to fund those vital services for seniors, as well as sharing the fund. Everyone likes to share the fund, so that's a good thing, too. So, and, and I think, Councilman Palowski, I think this is for a total of $20,000, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, we're on to capital projects and community services. We have a few. Councilwoman Hamlet, you want to do Number One?
Yes, and if it's okay, I think I can probably bundle 12207 and 12206, and just provide explanations.
So, that's, that's two and three?
Yep.
Right, so, okay, so, do number one first.
That's okay with you.
Yep.
Trying to get Director Schreger, he's got an early, he's got an early meeting tomorrow, far away, so trying to get him, get him moving. So, this is 12194, whereas on May 7, 2024, Common Council adopted Resolution 41147, extending a two-year contract with the consideration of two additional one-year contracts of each successive year to Grand Sanitation Services for curbside collection and recycling, with a two-year cost of $1,790,000. On September 4, City of Summit was formally advised that Grand Sanitation is being acquired by Interstate Waste Services of New Jersey, and they have provided all of the necessary documents to effect the contract's transfer of assignment without any changes to either party's rights, remedies, duties, and/or insurance. So, I would like to move this resolution, which will, which will be making this contract official with Interstate Waste Services taking over Grand Sanitation and providing the services. I'd like to move this resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, comments from the public? Comments from council? Councilman Boyer?
So, in regard to recycling, like state health benefits, recycling is, is, it's getting unmanageable. I mean, I would really like for somebody to tell me if they're actually separating the recycling, or just dumping it in the same thing, right? $1.7 million. And don't laugh, in Alabama, they don't recycle. My mom lives in Alabama. They just, they don't have $1.7 million worth of recycling. I mean, the question that we have to ask ourselves is, is this still, did you still work the squeeze, right, with recycling? I mean, we used to get paid for it, now we're paying for it. So, and this is a two-year contract, which really makes me nervous, because I'd rather see a one-year contract, but I know if the administrator was here, she'd probably tell me that there, this is probably the best deal that we could, and could get, and it'll be recycling all over the street. So, I will begrudgingly approve this.
Other comments? Yeah, I would just say, you know, we have, we're under contract, but I think, you know, this is something I think going forward, the city should take a hard, long look at. I mean, our residents expect that when we recycle, it gets recycled. There's been loads of studies and programs, 60 Minutes had something on this last year. Most of the, a lot of this stuff just goes into the, into the landfill anyways. So, we're literally paying $1.7 million to put it in a landfill. No one's getting what they think they're getting, except, you know, there's this perception that we're doing good, and if we're gonna do good, let's do good, instead of wasting money on this. And I, and I think this is something that I'd love the Environmental Commission to really wrap their hands around. If we're paying $1.7 million, think about what we could do around our transfer station, to really think about recycling in a way that we act, it actually works. You know, all this stuff gets commingled, gosh knows where it goes. I, I think this is a big opportunity. You know, Summit has always kind of led the way in being green. We've been a Silver Star community for decades now. This is not new, and I think this is something that, as Councilman Boyer says, this is kind of broke, and I think this deserves something, that we should relook at this. But we're, we're under contract, so. Councilwoman Cammelson?
Thank you, Council President. The Recycling Advisory Committee did go to Bay Shore over the summer. I can assure you, things are being separated. They took the initiative to speak to Maplewood about how they've been able to save money, and Mimi Zukoff and I met with Aaron and Jen and Mike Caputo, and we just talked about potentially different options and the feasibility of them. So, that is something that's being looked into, but of course, there are lots of challenges around it, but it's, the, the discussion is, is ongoing, so.
That's great, thank you. Other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Councilwoman Hamlet, you're bundling Number Two and Three?
Yes, thank you. So, this is Resolutions 12207 and 12206. I'll just give a brief description of what both of these are. For '06, the city received a bikeways grant from NJDOT in the amount of $500,000 to fund Phase Two of the Parkline Project. DOT, NJDOT required the project to be awarded by December 11, 2025. The project was bid unsuccessfully twice, and as a result, NJDOT has recommended that the city seek an extension due to the challenges with this bidding. And the Parkline Design Team, I know Director Schreger is working with them, and, and I think the extra time will be good on that one. On 12207, the city received a Safe Streets to Transit grant from NJDOT in the amount of $545,000 to fund the Broad Street Sidewalk Project for the City of Summit Broad Street Sidewalk Project. This project will construct a sidewalk along the south side of Broad Street from Walnut Street to Denman Place, and also construct, construct a stairway up to the Parkline. NJDOT required this project to be awarded by November 28. However, due to the complexity of the project, the plans are not finalized yet, and so I think that, that basically, the, the couple of challenges I think Director Schreger you've had, is coordinating with the county and establishing the rights away, so it's been taking a little longer, correct?
Yes, through you, Council President. Unfortunately, with the old railroad right-of-way, it's taking a lot of work to clearly define where it is, where the stair is going up. We, obviously, through DOT funding, can't put it on private property, or we need an easement for it, so we still have some survey work to, to get done. But preliminary plans have been submitted to the county, and we're pretty close.
That's good news.
So, I'd like to bundle and move Resolutions 12206 and 12207, and thank Director Schreger for all his work on those.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Comments from council?
Council President?
Yes, Councilman Boyer?
Yeah, just really quick, at the beginning of the year, we had established a Parkline Committee, which Councilwoman Toth is on, and we, we meet, and there are a lot of challenges with the Parkline, some that really makes me nervous, that it will get done. It's, it's gotten extremely expensive. And Director Schreger, actually, can you provide a little more detail in terms of the update about the challenges that we're having with the Parkline financing and different things, and sort of the different options that we are looking into?
Certainly, through you, Council President. Now, this phase of the Parkline continues where the bridge at Morris Avenue continues and would terminate at Russell Place, where there would be a stairwell constructed. Preliminary estimates had it closer in the $1 to $2 million range, which is close to the funding that's available. First bid, no bidders at all. We reached out to a lot of bidders, too busy, didn't have time, too complex, but we'll definitely get it the next time. Go out to bid, and we had one bid for $4 million, which is ludicrous pricing. So, we've kind of have to go back to the drawing board. You know, the one thing that really comes of it is that we learn it is complex. Well, one, contractors are not, are not hungry right now, so they have the ability to pick and choose. It's kind of stuck between a small project, where we get our usual contractors, and a large project, where there, there are contractors, for those who are just too busy doing major construction. So, what you have is a small contractor would love to do the path, but the bridge part just makes the price go up, or vice versa. So, currently, the Parkline is looking to almost just do the bridges separately, take them out of the picture, the demolition of them, and then put out a project to put the bridges back, just like we did on Morris, and then a separate project just to do the path itself. So, then we're just catering to specific contractors, so we can hopefully get better and more pricing to proceed. It's a little complex, because part of it's funded by DOT, so we want to get the maximum amount of our grant, but it's going to get tricky, and we're going to have to get, you know, creative with how we bid it and do it.
Thank you.
It's just absolutely hilarious that we, we had pushback from the residents, and all the plans are ready, and they want it now. They're like, wow, this is cool, we can't wait to get it, and now we can't fund it to make it happen. It's, what a world, I tell you. Thank you, Council President.
Well, one thing I will say, the Parkline Committee Board, this is, for those who are not aware, this is the first green space addition in Summit in decades. So, it's, it's an important project, and it's pretty cool. A lot of communities are doing these rail-to-trail projects, and ultimately, this could connect all the way to the Greenway, which is a, a green trail that runs all the way up and down the, the eastern seaboard. So, the, there's a lot that could happen with this, but a lot of these rail-to-trail programs take place in the countryside. There's no houses, and there's no bridges, and they don't go through neighborhoods. Summit, as we've always mentioned, is a built-out community, so the challenges are a little different. But I am very confident, the, the Parkline Board, they're, they're passionate about this, they're very creative, and I know, working with Director Schreger, I think will, I, I know I spoke with Dr. Rubino this week, there are some ideas about doing this a little differently. I hope that meeting you guys have at the end of the week is fruitful, and we can kind of move forward with this, so. All right, any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're on the consent agenda portion of our meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Okay. Would anyone from the public like to comment on any item, or multiple items, on the consent No, any comments from council? All right, do I have a, all in favor of the passing the consent agenda as presented?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that's it for the business portion of our meeting. We're now on to our public comment section of our meeting. I would just remind residents, if you'd like to make a public comment, please approach the dais, give your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes, as it looks like we'll have quite a few people who would wish to speak. And I want to thank city staff for staying, and have a good evening.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Brad Olson, and I live at 64 Blackburn. First of all, I'd like to commend Patty and Tax Collector. Anytime we have to deal with the Tax Department, which we've had to with some construction recently, she's just a pleasure to deal with, so that's great news. Also, I'd like to thank the council for continuing to fund the police department. You know, I've been a Summit residence since fifth grade, I don't want to tell you how many years, but I've never felt safer. Things have really improved quite a bit in the last several years, as we've supported our police department, added new police officers, and taken a number of the actions. But tonight, I want to speak a little bit about something that is near and dear to my family's, my family, which is the homeless issue in Summit. And I want to take a few minutes tonight to commend the truly meaningful work that's been done over the past year to address homelessness in our community. As I understand it, this effort really began when Councilwoman Hamlet took the time to meet personally with several of the individuals who were living in our streets, in our bus stops, at the train station, and even sleeping in the post office doorway overnight. She didn't just talk about the problem, she rolled up her sleeves and got to know the people behind it. Through her outreach, she identified a veteran in need and helped him secure housing. That single act of compassion set in motion a larger community-wide effort to find dignified, sustainable housing for Summit's semi-permanent homeless residents. Mayor Fagan then built on that momentum by establishing the Mayor's Task Force on Homelessness, bringing together a remarkable group of people from all parts of the community, council members, public safety officials, nonprofit leaders, clergy, business owners, and residents, including my mother, Karen Olson, who founded Family Promise. The results speak for themselves. To date, the task force has helped find, I believe, housing solutions for 19 of the 24 individuals who have been living on our streets. That's extraordinary progress in a very short time. This includes one individual my family has known for years, someone who spent countless nights walking the streets of Summit, who is now living proudly and safely in his own apartment right here in town. These are life-changing outcomes, not only for the people who've been housed, but for everyone in the community. It's a win-win for residents, for those who work and commute through Summit, for our children who walk downtown or use the train park, and most importantly, for the individuals who now have a home and a sense of dignity. So, I want to extend heartfelt thanks.
Mr. Olson, just wrap it up, please.
And recognition to Councilwoman Hamlet, Mayor Fagan, and every member of the task force, including Kevin Smallwood, my mother Karen Olson. This is Summit at its best. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Hi, Erwin Miller, 5 Knottville Drive. For those of you who may be on the fence, there's not many, but there are a few, and you're going to be important, I hope you will consider supporting the Together for Summit team shortly. Few reasons. One, financial responsibility, incredible public-private partnership to raise $500,000 for a public good. It's a huge win, and the fact that anyone would be opposed to that is ridiculous. Two, the SEF grant review process, the fact that anyone's opposing that, you don't know what you're talking about. They have been accepting grants without considering the financial liabilities that that might impose on our town. So, finally, Together for Summit is saying, or, excuse me, appointed people from the Together for Summit team are saying, we actually would like to understand what you're giving us, so we ensure that you're not sticking us with a bill down the road. So, for people who are saying that that's a problem... So for people who are saying that that's a problem, you know, you don't know what you're talking about. All right, let's keep on going. Transparency. For those of you who've seen what's going on at the School of Education, it used to be a couple of years ago, when the Democrat-appointed group there had a public comment, they wouldn't say a word, they wouldn't answer your questions, it was going, talking into a black hole. Now, they have a process, they answer questions, they're frankly even answering questions like we do here at the council meeting. So that is a great move on transparency from the Board of Ed, because finally, we're having Together for Summit appointed board members who are now taking charge of our school, School of Board of Ed. Next, compassionate and responsible. This was just talked about, I'm not going to go into it. There's a lot of bloating on the Summit Democrats about how morally superior they are, but they don't have results, and so it's enough. It's the Gavin Newsom of the Grand Parklands. Quality and safety, again, we just talked about that. You know, if your 21-year-old daughter comes home from the city at 10:00 p.m., our train station is now safer. There's not an issue there with potentially mentally ill, aggressive men. So that is another win for the Together for Summit team. Pushing back on overdevelopment, they're doing their best, considering the situation they've been placed in by state-level Democrat policymakers. It is not anyone here's fault, not the Summit Democrats, not the Together for Summit team, it is the state. And, you know, if you want to vote up and down on Column A, I encourage you to do that. Child-friendly policies, Tatlock Field is a child-friendly policy. This is about children of Summit, embracing the Wait for Eight movement that they've seen. That is a child-friendly policy that we're seeing. So, you know, another reason, another chalk one up for the Together for Summit team. Reasonable rhetoric, they focus on the results and their policy, but all we hear from the other attackers are whining and complaining about nothing, they're making up fake arguments, not to mention you're out there marching with TDS. Relax, everybody, you're making everyone crazy. You're the one who's creating insane rhetoric in this town, and you're blaming it on the Together for Summit team. It's ridiculous, we all see through it, and you should know that. So Together for Summit team's clearly doing a great job in all these areas. Of course, I cannot convince you if you just care about party politics and want to-
Mr. Miller, can you wrap it up, please?
Yep, and I think we'll wrap it up, more to say. And I think we need more Mike McTurnan's in this town.
I still won't give you more time, but thank you.
Rachel Kramer, 88 Elm Street, Summit, New Jersey. I'm here tonight to talk about honesty and accountability, and to ground my statement in facts, hopefully for the last time. On September 2nd, candidate Dan Christofouli filed a police report naming me and Mr. Anonymous. In that report, he alleged that after a council meeting, we threatened him and yelled at him and followed to him to his car. Three days later, on September 5th, he repeated those claims in a recorded video posted on Facebook stating, "Two of Councilwoman Smallwood's supporters heckled and threatened me as I left council chambers, and one followed me to my car." On September 7th, the Summit Democratic Committee amplified this narrative by sharing a link to an article publicly thanking the police for investigating the matter. A couple of months ago, Bob made an honest mistake. He apologized privately for that mistake. It wasn't enough. Candidate Jaclyn Lasaracena came to the council meeting talking about what that mistake did to her, and what that mistake did to her reputation and her family. She demanded public accountability from Bob, asked me to delete my Facebook post, which I did. And she talked about the weight of those statements, because when a public person or political person says something, there's a weight to it. And I started thinking about that when I was, you know, thinking about Dan's police report. When a political candidate lies to the police calmly, deliberately, and on camera, it doesn't just hurt the target of the lie, it begins to undermine the trust in our institutions, in our democracy, and finally, in our justice system. So I knew that these claims weren't true, but I felt fear. I thought about my family, my job, and my safety, because even a lie, when told loudly and repeatedly, can take on a life of its own. People did ask me about what happened, they wondered if it might be true, and that's the harm. That seed of doubt is exactly what was intended when Dan said he was threatened and followed to his car. So to protect myself and my family, I had to obtain the police report and the video footage, and the evidence could not be clearer. No one yelled at Dan, no one threatened Dan, and no one followed him to his car. So no resident should ever have to worry that asking a political candidate a question could result in a false police report being filed against them, or that asking candidates to adhere to memorandums of understanding might result in low-level harassment claims. That's the real threat to public safety. Not residents calling the police when they need help, but political candidates abusing law enforcement to intimidate or silence people who disagree with them. The chilling effect is real, and when residents see this happen, they think twice about speaking up, out of fear for their reputations, their careers, or their family. That's not accountability, that's not leadership, and it's not the type of behavior we should reward with public office.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor Fagan, President McTurnan, members of council and staff. I'm Jim Bennett, B-E-N-N-E-T-T, 38 Fairview Avenue. I want to bring up a topic that has bothered me for several years, the budget cycle. And I'm not picking on Summit, because from my continuing legal education courses, I don't want to say how many years ago, I know that probably all the municipalities in Summit operate the same way. A former council member explained to me that the city's fiscal year is the calendar year, yet the budget is not set until the fiscal year is nearly halfway over. For the first half of the year, the city operates on what amounts to continuing resolutions. For sure, the data responsiveness for this method is excellent, but once the budget is finally set, but the city operates for half the year based on its projected budget. Rick Hanley, the Board of Education member overseeing operations, advised me that the school fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th. Since he has taken charge, the school district will call for input in December, work on the budget in January, and finalize its budget in February. The February budget will include variations to account for contingencies related to state aid and insurance. Mr. Hanley plans to sit in on the city's capital budget workshop in December to see what the workshop is all about. Since the city must underwrite the bonding for the school district, would it not make sense to include the school capital budget in the December workshop? After all, the school budget is half the property tax bill. Another idea, for which I'm sure there's an answer, which I don't know what it is, is to change the city's fiscal budget year from calendar year to July 1st to June 30th. That way, the city would operate on a fixed budget for the entire fiscal year. Now, if I should be having this conversation with Assemblywomen Munoz and Matzakoudas, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Anonymous, I have a lot to say, and I'm not going to be able to get to all of it, or even enough of it, unfortunately. So I'm not going to attempt to try to stumble and ramble over my own words, but there's a lot of things I want to talk about, and I'll start with, I guess, party politics in general, and what I've experienced from the political parties, and from coming into Summit and everything like that. I'm somebody who, yes, goes to municipalities. Some of you are probably wondering, you know, why is he still here? When you start to get to know the personalities a little bit, you start to get a lot of feedback, it starts to become very intriguing. And to see the video where showed my interaction with Mr. Christofelli, was just me asking questions, member of the Free Press, who identifies himself as the Free Press with his identifiable badge on, you know, just simply asking questions and stuff like that. And then seeing that same video was used to make the Republican Party, like, shame them for allowing free speech, for allowing somebody to come to meetings and speak. The same response of watching Mr. Christofelli berate the chief for allowing him to speak. In the United States of America, they're allowing him? They're allowing him? The most interesting thing about that video, I thought, was the conversation happening after it, not even the interaction that showed that Christofelli lied. But you hear me talk to Mr. McTurnan, and he's kind, after I belittled him and berated him, and he took it like a champ and was kind. And they think, oh, this is a scandal, something's going on here, they're being nice to him. He's a political agitator, a political agitator. You know what's good for elected officials? Agitation. It makes good elected officials. Public nuisances? Yeah, we'll get to figure out real quick who everybody is and what they stand for. You know? How dare them allow, be nice to him? It must be something else going on. They surely can't be treating him like a human being. You know, the same people who were happy that I was here giving you guys hell, the same people who loved it and was like, oh, it's the greatest thing, I love your videos, they're so awesome, and they're entertaining, and keep at it. The second I started asking questions about restriction, the restriction of speech of residents from the SMDC page, the second I started asking those questions, I started getting ridiculed, I started getting shamed, publicly, privately. I was the one who was being harassed, over and over. I mean, party politics has damaged, the people have the inability to see what's happening around them. Surely something's constructive here. This can't be a guy who goes to towns and gives speeches and encourages others on his channel to do the same, to have a voice for themselves, to empower others to take part in the political process. I don't lean one side or the other. Someone asked me the other day, did you go to the No Kings Rally? No, I go to meetings, I take part in actual change. I don't participate in the fluff, I don't try to emotionally take something and get you where I'm at emotionally so you can understand-
Mr. Anonymous, can you wrap it up?
People need to explain their emotions so they can articulate it, otherwise, they're brainwashed, and you need to speak about these things. And thank you for all the speaking today.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Denise Perillo. I reside at 23 Middle Avenue. I'm here because I received a letter about 15 Middle Avenue, and it said, at this meeting tonight, it was going to be discussed. It's a, it's a house that they rebuilt, and I guess they're looking for an ordinance. They have a stop-work order has been placed on this, like, months ago, and it's sitting there, and nothing is being done.
Ms. Perillo, perhaps, is this for the zoning board?
No, this says, "Public hearing for service on property owners."
It was probably at the zoning board meeting yesterday.
At the wrong meeting.
Yeah, sorry. You know, though-
No, it says today's date. It says October, right, October 20th.
That's yesterday. You know what, though? If you have written comments, we'd be more than happy to forward them to the appropriate people.
I just wanted to know what's going on with it, because it's been sitting with nothing.
Yeah, so my recommendation would be to contact Augusto de Mateo at City Hall here.
Okay.
And if you wait a second-
Just have him give me the main number, 6400, 273-6400, and I'll put you through.
Okay.
Okay.
And who am I speaking to?
Rosemary.
No, 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 I know you.
Oh, Augusto Delmaso.
Yeah, and just call that number, and we'll get you in touch with him, and he can answer your questions.
He's our land use manager.
I'm glad I came to the meeting anyway, but-
I'm glad you were here as well.
It was the wrong day. Okay, well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, Stacy Allen, Plymouth Road. I have lived in Summit since 1999, and I always thought that council and the city government offices took very good care of our city, and I didn't really worry about anything, I really wasn't very aware. I didn't pay close attention to anything going on in council, maybe because I had young kids, I don't know, but I wasn't paying attention, until the gigantic Broad Street West project. When that started to happen, my ears perked up, and I started going to meetings, listening to meetings online, because it was during COVID, and I was shocked at what I learned. I was sad to see that our council at the time did not listen, after we could have public meetings again, and that we had everybody coming to meetings into the wee hours of the night, that council wasn't listening, and they, in fact, did vote yes for that project, and then rescinded their vote. So that was a shock to me. So I got involved, and that's a pain for everybody, because I got involved, because I could be a real pain. Once I was involved, I just started noticing everything. So in 2023, I noticed a brand-new issue in Summit that I had never seen before. We had homeless people living in our bus stops. For living in this town as long as I have, I have no idea why we never had this before, and now all of a sudden, we had it. I hear about all the New Jersey stuff, I'm not buying it, something had changed. So we had, in addition to homeless people living in the bus stops, we also had train station people that were, I don't know if they were homeless, or if they were just drunk, or if they were high, but they were not well people, and I did not feel safe. I cut through the bus stop, the train station very often, I see high school kids there. It was very upsetting to me to see that there was, there were people there that did not seem safe to be around kids or around anybody, really. This is not just once in a while, this was all the time this was happening, not every single day, but a lot. I wrote to our previous council president, Greg Vartan, and he and that council team did try to do a few things to reduce the homeless population living in the bus stops. They turned off the power source and didn't allow the furniture. People had actually had lawn chairs, and cell phones, and blankets, and everything. They had moved into our bus stops. And they, the previous council did try to do a few things, but unfortunately, even by doing those things, it did not fix the problem, and the problem persisted. I walk in the morning, I take pictures of this all the time, I have pictures, if anybody needs to see them, from all different times when there were people living in our bus stops. The problem was so bad that one day, I saw, I was driving by, and I saw that it was raining outside, and all the people that were waiting for the bus had to sit outside and could not use the bus stop, because the people had been residing in there. So they were literally getting wet. These are everyday people, they could be commuters to New York, they could be workers coming to Summit, all different people of all different levels of income were waiting outside the bus stop, and they could not use the bus stop itself. Oh, I'm already done, wow.
Yeah, Stacy, you're going to wrap it up, yeah.
That is bad. Sorry. Anyway, I brought pictures, because I'm very happy that the bus stop, I like to take pictures of everything for everybody, the bus stop and the train station look immaculate today. Thank you to the team, Together for Summit, thank you to the council for doing a lot of stuff, and doing all the things to help all of our problems in Summit. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Joseph Brown. I reside at 27 Gensmore Ave. So back in 2023, like she just said, went to bus stop, the train station, it was all homeless people. Well, there is a truth to this whole thing. I've seen the whole thing, that's the year I moved to Summit. I've seen the whole thing, I've seen the homeless people. I was working at the hospital, Morris Town Medical Center. I've seen these homeless people, I've seen everything. That's when I started talking to this community of Summit. I got, that's when I started to step in and get involved. I'm now a council, I'm not one of you guys, I'm not the mayor of Summit. I'm just a normal community member, just like everyone else here. We are all family. We might not know each other, but we sleep, we eat, we breathe, we go to work, we go to school. Miss Nobody. I might not know you, but you might be friends. But, yes, brothers. You come to this council meeting too. But we all have family here. But back in 2023, I seen all these homeless people, and I sat down next to them. When I found out Vidilia did- With Delia, when I found out that Delia did, was dealing with the homeless people, I didn't know, I didn't know Delia actually did that, until the mayor told me about it. That's when I wanted to talk to Delia, and no more. And then that's when I got involved, more and more and more. I sat next to these homeless people, day in, day out, outside of work, outside of school, sat next to these guys, and I found out what they need, what their needs were. I got them what they need, clothes when the winter time comes. I talked to the younger generation, showed the younger generation, this is what's going on in our community, open their eyes up to the bigger picture. So back to now, as of now, there are four homeless people now on our streets. It used to be one, but there are four. The four individuals that I have on the street right now are all at the library. They come and go, I say please. The pictures that we get every day helps us out, cause it shows us what's going on. Cause we not there all the time, we all have our normal lives, we go to work, we got families, day in. I gotta go to work, I gotta have time day in, day out to see this stuff. Whether this community help, it helps us out when knowing this stuff. With you.
Yeah. Mr. Brown, can you wrap it up, please?
Okay. But, the three minutes.
Yeah.
Miss Nobody, I agree with you, three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, for your comments.
I agree with you, three minutes.
Any other comments from the public?
Okay, so I'm Philomena, and I've been a little bit involved in this community as well, and I've seen a little bit of the homeless community, and I've seen Ms. Hamlet's aide in this community, thank you very much. You've, you've done quite a handful. Still more to do, don't give up, please, and we're right there with you, okay? There's, there's, there's more problems behind the scene. There's not just, there's not just drugs involved, there's not just alcohol involved, there's, there's mental illness that needs to be addressed. And God bless you, you're, you're helping us along with that. So, um, please keep helping with the efforts, I've said this before. Ms., Madam Mayor, we're, we're at the 10-yard goal line, it's not time to punt. Let's, let's keep going, let's keep pushing. Forgive me my analogies, and Mr. Boyer over there, I'm gonna expect you to keep, keep going here with us, okay? Yes. Call backs, please. Ms. Polowski, and I just have to say, I really appreciated that historical presentation.
Thank you.
We, we need some help on the technical end to, to help them out a little bit, though.
I must have turned it off. It was definitely not Rosie's fault.
Well, aside from that, I, I enjoyed your presentation and, and, you know, give some good marks over there for that. Anyway, um, thank you very much, this, this council has done a very good job, and good marks on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else from the public wish to speak at this time?
And I made it under three minutes.
You did, thank you for that. It is doable.
Jaclyn LaSarsina, I'm a resident of Summit. Uh, just to echo earlier comments in a slightly different flavor, uh, we are two weeks away from Election Day, early voting starts this Saturday, um, so regardless of which candidates people are voting for, I just encourage everyone to get out and vote because every vote is really, really important. Uh, today I'd like to talk about pedestrian safety. I'm really glad that there were some strides made this evening, but there is a lot more work to do. I asked council several months ago to send around a community-wide survey so that we could identify pedestrian safety concern hotspots, combine that with information from our first responders, um, following on the success of the Dog Park Survey that was sent around. Um, thus far, it has not gone out, but pedestrian and bike safety continues to be one of the top concerns that I hear from neighbors. Um, I wouldn't be able to cover all of them in two minutes' time, but I would like to try to cover some of the most commonly raised issues that I have heard about. Uh, with respect to Fay Place, Woodland Ave, and Iris Road, cars go tearing down there to get onto River Road, there are a lot of families with small children, uh, lots of pedestrian and bicyclists, um, so traffic calming measures are certainly needed there. So too with Caldwell Ave and Clark Street off of Springfield, uh, they're often used as a cut-through to get, to avoid the light on Broad Street. Um, similarly, lots of families with small children, lots of pedestrian and bicyclists. Uh, several months ago, there was discussion about improving pedestrian access and safety to the ShopRite. Um, to my knowledge, there haven't been, uh, improvements made there, but there are a lot of people, a lot of Summit residents who walk to get to the ShopRite to do their grocery shopping, um, so that's another area of opportunity. Uh, and then the Lincoln Hubbard pickup, uh, I think in part because the tiered parking garage was allowed to fall into disrepair, it's pushed parking to lots of different lots and streets around town where Lincoln Hubbard parents used to park to pick up their kids. Uh, now there really is precious little, almost none, pardon, almost no parkings available, um, and it's mayhem, it's a really big safety issue for the children and for the people who are doing the pickups. So some, some relief there would be greatly appreciated. Uh, switching to, to road maintenance, Tulip Street headed toward Brayton and Oak Knoll, um, it's like a test track for an ATV, it's, it's really ridiculously bumpy, there are some neighbors there who are trying to sell their home, and the road is just a mess. Um, so if there's an opportunity to do some, some repaving, that would be greatly appreciated. Uh, and then in general, just, um, traffic calming measures, right? Things as easy as painting horizontal lines across the road, uh, very cost-effective way, research tells us it gets drivers to slow their speed. Um, so would love to see greater investments in pedestrian and bike safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Other comments from the public?
Monique Taylor, 167 Passaic Avenue. Since the Republicans seem to wallow in revisionist history regarding BSW while whining about censorship from the SMDC, let's take a walk down memory lane, shall we? It's the summer of 2023, a pride family-friendly event had been scheduled with a black drag performer known as Queen Camilla. A few of their homophobic constituents decide to complain about the performer's adult social media presence. Their treasurer, Tina O'Connor, post in neighborhood for Summit stating that Delia Hamlet had the drag show canceled and was, quote, "grateful that a diligent council person got him fired", unquote, while also referring to the performer as a pedophile and a pervert. After going to City Hall and fighting to keep the drag show, which was canceled by the former city administrator, Mike Rogers, and raising awareness online with concerned citizens, I was served a cease and desist letter from Delia threatening me with a defamation lawsuit, when it was her Republican treasurer that told everyone that Delia was responsible. A subsequent Oprah request revealed that both she and Lisa Allen were not only responsible for his firing, but that Delia was hiring an attorney because in Lisa's words, quote, "they are walking the line of defamation", unquote. Not for the Republican treasurer, but for me. Now ours are complaining about censorship by the SMDC while issuing threats of lawsuits to Summit residents to silence the truth and dissent. Bullying Democratic candidates at council meetings because they don't agree with you is not leadership. Serving a wealthy sliver of the Summit population while paying lip service to the majority is not democracy, it's plutocracy. All these examples smack of cues taken from this cruel MAGA administration, and it is why, I know it's so funny, and it is why Summit needs a change in November for a return to sanity. Please vote Jackie Chantel and Dan for City Council, and I will submit this remarks soon.
Thank you for your comments.
And if anyone else wants to see these notes.
Uh, anyone else like to speak from the public?
Tracy Keegan, um, I'm a resident of Summit, I've lived here since 1994. One of the lessons we've learned about Republicans since 2016 is that every accusation is actually a confession, and we saw a real-life local example of that last week when Together for Summit sent out a despicable postcard filled with lies and slander that shocked and disgusted our community. On that mailer were the words, "Summit deserves leaders who respect the truth, not candidates who weaponize the police and press to silence critics." Well, for once, I agree with you. It's true that your party has weaponized the police for the past two years, Oprah-ing 911 calls, including mine, and police reports filed by residents who believed public safety was being threatened. But that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here because of the other part of that postcard, the part about using the press to silence critics, because that is exactly what happened to me earlier this year. In February, the Tap editor blocked me from commenting on Tap articles. He and I spoke by phone on February 27th for two hours and 14 minutes. What he shared during that call was deeply disturbing. Here are a few direct excerpts, quote, "You're a problem for all these guys, all of them. They take screenshots, they take your screenshots, Patrick Nash, Nick Kurial, all of them have sent me stuff. The Republicans send me every frickin' thing you say about me. All the time, they send me things you write. One of the Republicans sent me something you wrote. People have sent me things you said about me. A month or two months into it, you know, one of the Republicans, hey, here's what Tracy said about you. I talked to Lisa Allen an hour ago because you called me Monday night. Apparently, you drove her over the grave and she quit. Yeah, she quit because of you. Delia Hamlet texted me and said, every time I put a post out, Tracy is disagreeing with me. Like, Delia's all weirded out by you, like, why are you doing that to her? I've talked to Delia about this, she said, you have, I mean, to be quite honest with you and me personally, I'm ready to talk to my boss, Mike Shapiro, about you. You're tagging Delia's posts, saying that we have some unholy alliance where Delia's telling me to block you into Tap, from Tap into. Now, by the way, Kevin Smallwood, after an hour and a half yesterday, showed me and said, here's what's going on. I looked at it, it was from you. He said, this is from Tracy, it was a screenshot, apparently. This went on for more than two hours. We would be here all night if I shared everything he said to me. This illustrates a disturbing willingness by Republican elected officials and leaders to target voices they disagree with. This has no place in Summit and no place in a democracy. Summit, we can do better. And since I have a few seconds, I just want to point out, filing a police report is a crime, so if that happened, there would be charges filed. Number two, there's no cameras in the parking lot. Number three, there were 60 homeless people, that was reduced to 24.
Thank you, could you wrap it up, please, Ms. Keegan?
And 18 were in active case management by the time the Democrats, the Republicans were elected. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, any other people from the public like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sabrina Majani, located in 417 Morris Avenue. Uh, I'm here to thank you for to, for, for the Summit together for, for your housing, for the homeless individual who were living in our stop and train station for many years. And I know you worked very hard to get people into appropriate housing and addiction program, and I'm a member of, uh, of the association in Livingston Hospital, and one of the, the member mentioned, uh, Delia's name, I was not sure he was talking about Delia, and then I found out because you were collecting some clues, some stuff for his, for his apartment, your apartment, and then when I found about Delia, I was, oh, I know that, you know, I heard about that person, and I saw her in, in the post and Facebook. I have a guest, uh, from France and Montreal, as you can tell, I have accent, I'm a citizen, but I'm not American. And they visited many, for, for many years, and, uh, even my aunt, she came, she, she came two years, two, two weeks ago, and she just went back, and she saw the difference in the train station and the buses, she said, oh, I remember last time, there were a lot of homeless here in the train station, and, and I said, yeah, I said, because, thank you now to Dr. Elizabeth and her team, uh, great, uh, great teamwork, and, and we appreciate what you're doing. And, as we, as, as I mentioned it, uh, we saw a lot of changes, and Summit, uh, has improved, uh, so, so much recently, and I'm very thankful, and I'm so proud to be a Summit resident, and I feel comfortable now letting my son walk in from my house to Summit, and great job, one team, one family. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, Dory Gagnon, 27 Bedford. I want to thank all of you for being volunteers. I've been a volunteer my whole life, um, in healthcare, that's why I'm on the Board of Health. And I love volunteering. I've helped with the homeless, I've worked in underserved communities for the last 15 years. So, to roll up your sleeves, like Ms. Hamlet has done, I've met many that are here, um, you know, I, I thank everybody on the homelessness task force and everyone in the city who's watching for helping, because it's not just you guys, so thank you. But I want to address your comments, that you've ignored two emails that I've sent you, and, uh, look at me, I'm right here, not to the attorney, to me. I'm a resident.
Ms. Gagnon, you're supposed to address the council president.
Sorry, through you, council president. Your comments last week, she defames everyone, she defamed many people, many people, as you were referring to me, Ms. Kamelson, if I even said that correctly, I apologize. After I left the council meeting, you were referring to me. Now, I hold people accountable when I come up to the meetings, and I think that's a great thing, because if I didn't hold this council accountable, we'd have Broad Street West. And with Broad Street West, we'd have the pilot, we'd have, we'd have a nightmare on our hands, and I made thousands and thousands of residents aware of what was happening here. And accountability is not a bad thing, disagreeing is not a bad thing, asking you to recuse yourself is not a bad thing, it's not defamation. I'm on boards, I had to take an ethics, uh, board to pass my license, so asking you to recuse your thing, you accuse yourself, is not a bad thing, there's a lawsuit out. You know, what you said to me, just like what Rachel said before, I have a name to uphold, okay? My name, people come up to me and they, they thank me for a lot of things that my family and I have done for them, because I volunteer thousands and thousands of hours, give out hundreds of free healthcare throughout this entire state. I roll up my sleeves, just like Ms. Hamlet does. Public service is a wonderful thing, so for you saying what you said does more damage than you can possibly know. An apology goes a long way. I fought for oratory, I fought, I went to every board, planning board, I said, I didn't want it, but I went to work with them, I gave you guys suggestions, I wasn't defaming you- I wasn't defaming you. I tried to work with you guys. You are an elected official. You hold yourself at a higher standard.
Ms. Gagnon, can you wrap it up, please?
Just like everybody else does.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Tom Zieber, 768 Springfield Avenue. I appreciate Ms. LaSara Sina's segue earlier, because I would love to identify a pedestrian safety hotspot. I think it's a well-known fact that this mayor and council have earned an A-plus grade on public safety in town. But I would like to share a story with everyone and offer a recommendation. This afternoon, while I was walking on Eggers Court, I spoke with a resident who was incredibly polite and cordial, but shared that he'd really like to see a three-way stop at Ashwood Avenue, excuse me, and Russell Place, because cars are frequently speeding down Ashwood Avenue at that intersection. When I was back in my car just a few minutes later, I witnessed a resident innocently walking her dog at the intersection of Ashwood Ave, Michigan Ave, and Pearl Street, and nearly get mowed down by a speeding vehicle. I made sure to ask if she was okay, and she was, but she was definitely startled. Now, it won't surprise anyone in Summit to hear that cars are driving too fast on Ashwood Ave, but I still wanted to mention this tonight to encourage council to revisit the traffic in this area and consider new beacons, or stop signs, or speed humps, or whatever it takes to ensure that cars slow down and that we don't end up with a very unnecessary and avoidable tragedy in Summit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public?
All right. I'll try and keep it short. I know we're getting late. Sue Roberts, 48 Oakland Place. I've been a Summit resident for 23 years. And I swear Stacy read my mind with her opening comments, because I also was guilty of ebbing and flowing in my involvement in issues within town, up until the Broad Street West issue. That certainly opened my eyes and changed that. And now I try really hard to research and ask the hard questions. Recently, I've seen a lot of attacks on Ms. Hamlet as she's running for council, asking that she retract some statements she made that were clarifying facts. I've looked into a lot of information. I have a meeting with Mrs. LaSara Sina tomorrow to try to understand everything that's swirling around in the police report issue, and hopefully I'll get some clarification there. But from what I can tell, based on the facts, there is nothing to retract. I've read the Oprah statement. I've read the emails. I've looked at the body cam footage. And so I'm anxious to learn more about that tomorrow. What matters to me most as a voter and a resident is action and proven results. It's a lot easier to spin stories than it is to acknowledge results. Delia, this council and the Together for Summit team have delivered and kept their promises. They've done an enormous amount in the last two years. No one works harder than Delia to fight over development, house the homeless, address flooding issues, and a slew of other accomplishments in her short two-year on tenure. Delia shows up. Even Ms. LaSara Sina, her opponent, acknowledged in one of her original campaign posts, Delia shows up. While others talk, Delia acts. While others dramatize, Delia delivers. And while others focus on what's wrong, she focuses on getting it right. And you can see the results for Summit residents every single day. If you owned a corporation and your employees or volunteers were knocking it out of the park, would you fire them or would you encourage them to continue? I'm guessing we would all do the latter. Why would we fire the team that has kept their campaign promises and generated positive results for the residents of Summit? That team is Together for Summit. I appreciate all the hard work. And Delia, I really appreciate that suit of armor that you wear when you're getting attacked online. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, I just want to come and say thank you to this council. Oh, sorry, Lisa Allen, 27 Plain Street. I just want to say thank you to this council. First of all, it was an honor through you, Council President. It was an honor to work with Councilman Boyer, Mayor Fagan, Councilwoman Hamlet, and Councilman Plousky. You have done an extraordinary job in safety in this town. One of the biggest charges the night, I remember the reorg meeting and being up here, and the biggest concern people had was the safety in the town. And you have worked to do that. There was a lot of criticism on the RPO, and you had the brave, the courageous, brave stance to improve on the RPO that we passed that first year. I hesitated on the second RPO because I was concerned that it would disrupt our community even further. There was so much pushback. But you know what? You guys had the, I was almost saying something. You had the guts to do it. You had the guts to do it. And I want to thank you, because not everybody has guts to do it. And you can listen, which is very important. That's where leadership starts. But where leadership really hits the road is where it's in action. And you've taken some really big stances that have made actions in this town far beyond where you'll have a better town than when you go. So I want to say thank you for keeping us safe. Thank you for working on pedestrian safety. I want to thank you, because I know I'm going to run out of time. I want to thank you for Ashwood and Morris making that development smaller. I know people aren't happy with it. But there is a 47-unit apartment building going up on River Road and Morris Avenue that everyone has forgotten that was passed in 2023. You fought against Morris Avenue and Ashwood to make it smaller. Not because you're against affordable housing, because I know all of you are, because you're sitting there fighting for the Housing Authority every minute of the day. And Delia, you were the first one that sat with the unhoused individuals and humanized them. You humanized them, and you forced us all to understand how important their dignity was, too. So thank you for making me a better councilwoman at the time. Thank you for helping this council be better, because you made us all better. And that's what leadership is. So, and I also just want to say really fast, because I have 40 seconds. Delia and I asked for a family-friendly drag queen, the same one that was hired year after year after year for four years. We just said, I won't even give the title of the Instagram of the one drag queen that they were going to bring in. And we said, listen, it's not family-friendly. Just bring someone in family-friendly, the same guy. We didn't fire anyone. We just tried to continue to do the right thing for our town. So thank you. I thank you. There's thousands of residents that thank you. And I hope you win this fall, because you deserve it, and I know that you will continue to make this town better for the next 40 years. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other public comments?
Good evening. Diego Huig, Argal Court. I want to thank all of you for your service. You all, almost all of you got elected, and you deserve to be appointed, Mike. You all represent your constituencies. There's plenty of people here who feel much better represented by Delia than by Michelle in Ward 1. There's a lot of people who feel the other way. That's the American way. Some of us are on one side, the other are on the other. So I'm here to remind all of us that in a city where about 7,000 voters are available in each ward, approximately. So Michelle Kamelson got 3,000 votes in Ward 1. 3,000 people cast a vote for you, Michelle. I feel represented by you. I voted for you. I was not one of the 3,300 people who voted for Claire, because I'm in the wrong ward for that. Bob, obviously, I did not vote for you. You got 2,000 votes. Jamelle got 2,200. Kevin, across all of Summit, got 4,000 votes. Delia, 2,200. Lisa, you got 2,600 votes. So all of you. And, you know, Mayor Fagan, I don't have the numbers, but you got a lot of, you want them? I'll get them. But you were pretty close to Kevin. My point here is that all of you represent different people. And the people who support one side may not agree with the other side, but all of you represent us. And in my particular case, Michelle really does represent me, and I really thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Other public comments?
Kevin McGoye, Woodland Avenue. Hopefully, this is the last time I have to speak here or wind up speaking here. Last week, our last council meeting, I talked about how disturbed I was by Dan Christofilli's police statements, statements to the police, and the false statements to the police, and that I didn't think the city was taking it seriously enough, and I don't. At the time, I had found out, because Dan, in his speech to the police, said that another council member had also said that somebody had threatened them. I asked one of the other candidates if it was her. She didn't respond, so I opened it. I got the body cam footage. I got the information she provided to the police that they had. I got the police report and everything else. And I was shocked at what I saw, not so much then, but after. I got a series of emails of communication that she had with respect to the chair of the Republican Party. And it was very clear that in that, the chair of the Republican Party explained to her, I don't know if you guys have all seen the video, and you've seen all of Jacqueline's emails, but it's very clear, on July 1st, when Jacqueline spoke with the police, she understood exactly why Nick Kurial took pictures of her front lawn with lawn signs, because both parties in agreement that wouldn't happen till Labor Day, and this was in June. She understood, she actually, in her conversation, brought up the fact that a former mayor actually had a brick thrown through his window and asked Mr. Kurial if he was aware of that. Mr. Kurial responded that he was aware of that. And as a matter of fact, after the last election, he had a rock thrown through his window. And, you know, Ms. LaSara Sina responded, so sorry to hear that. It's unacceptable. What happened to your family? This and that. But that was from June 14th to June 17th, these emails were exchanged. On July 1st, she went to the police and said that she was very upset and disturbed by what Mr. Kurial took these pictures of her lawn, because he was unhappy with her signs or something. And then she went on to another thing that he said was that he had a brick or a rock thrown through his window, and she didn't understand how that was relevant to the conversation or discussion they were having. And the police officer, because it is strange, we just said that out of nowhere, said, was he trying to scare you? And she said, I don't know. I don't know. She did know. She was trying to make it look like she was threatened and harassed. So now we have two candidates from one party that are literally going to the police and giving them false information about people. Now, we need to get rid of party politics locally. If there's any way you can get rid of parties, because Claire, you're not even looking when people are talking. You're down on your thing the whole time. I think that we could all agree that that kind of behavior is unacceptable, and people shouldn't be doing this. But you can't say that, because they're your party. You're not even looking. You need to get rid of party politics.
Mr. McGoye, wrap it up, please.
But anyway. All right. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Philomena, you already had a comment. No, you only get one. I'm sorry. If I let you, I'd have to get, we'd be here till 2:00 in the morning. Sorry. Apologies. I'm happy to talk to you after the meeting.
Hi. I know it's late. Amy DeCibio, 1S6 Road. I don't want to rehash everything that everyone else has said, but I as well would like to thank the Together for Summit team. I think you guys have done a tremendous job. Unfortunately, I've lived in this town for 25 years, and I don't ever remember politics being like this, ever. And I don't know if this is the leadership at the top at the SMDC or what it is, but there is something very toxic in the air. And I am grateful for you guys, that you come week in and week out, and day in and day out, doing your job. And I apologize that our community doesn't always treat you so well. So thank you so much for everything you do, and I hope you keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments from the public? Okay. If there's no further comments, I'm going to close public comments section. And we're moving on to the last part of our meeting, which is council member comments and new business.
Councilman Boyer? Oh, yes. Counsel President, before, I just want to, there was comments directed to Councilwoman Kamelson, and I've advised her not to respond to those comments because of a threat of litigation. And our job, my job is to protect the city from litigation. Since there's a threat, we've put the joint insurance fund on notice, and I've asked Ms. Kamelson not to respond whatsoever.
Thank you. Councilman Boyer?
Oh, thank you. I was like, enamored. I was like, what? These kids. Joseph Brown. Man, you, what, some impeccable words, like, we may not all know each other, but we're all family.
Wow, that's deep, man. You're absolutely right. That's how I feel. That's how I feel about people in general. Real quick about safety. Tulip got a lot of phone calls about four-way stops on Tulip, and we're going to look to extend that to Lorna. What needs to happen, though, is the engineer has to survey it and make sure that it's allowable to put a four-way stop there. You know, there's liability if we just throw up a four-way stop. And it's not approved, really, to go there. But I agree that those areas need a four-way stop. Let's see. The ShopRite, so I was down on Milton Avenue a couple of months ago, and, yeah, I spoke to like 40 residents about the crossover to ShopRite and people walking back and forth. I get it. I talked to the engineer about that. That intersection is, it's going to take a lot of engineering, and we have been talking about it. And the county, it's a county road. There's a lot going on with that intersection. So it's not just as simple as, you know, let's paint a crosswalk so people can walk across it. There's a lot going on there. But yes, we are talking about that. This weekend, on Saturday, we had an amazing event at the Summit Housing Authority. They had a prom. And Council President was there, and Councilwoman Hamlet, the mayor came and danced. We put a lot of effort into that. We started talking about it in July. And I know you've heard me speak about the Summit Housing Authority. They're going through a lot. Being charged, overcharged for rent, and, you know, these folks don't, I mean, every cent counts, right? So this prom, which they haven't had in several years, was amazing. We all got dressed up. You should have seen, all of us. We were to the T. It was the first ever prom that I went with my wife. It was great. I'm still thinking about Luther Vandross in my head, and it's crazy. But the smiles on everyone's face, the smiles of enjoyment, the different cultures that was there. We had a great time. And I couldn't help but think that Summit needs an A-plus, A-class Summit Housing Authority. And we're just not there. And I'm not going to give up on it. I'm going to continue to talk about it every time I'm up here, until people get tired of it, right? I will implore people to go to the Summit Housing Authority meetings, if you want to know what's going on, just like you come up here, right? And, you know, you give us the business, I want you to go there and give them the business, right? You know, they're taking money from people. Go there. You know, like, so just an update on that. I did reach out to Congressman Kane's office. He is definitely up for helping us out. He is definitely up for helping us out. Still talking to residents, having them write their complaints. As soon as the federal government opens, maybe we can, you know, get some movement there. The federal government still closed?
Still closed.
Let's see here. Ashwood Avenue speeding, yeah, that's a problem. We continue to work with the police on that. That's that cut-through coming off of 22. I got a bunch of notes here. Oh, okay. So, I'll end with this one. Good leaders change the culture. The culture in City Hall and in Summit, the workers fantastic, right? Like, people, that hasn't changed, right? But what's changed is the leadership has changed. You know, we hold people accountable. We all have a certain bar of what we want this city to be. And to just be blunt about it, we got busy. We got busy. Day, I mean, even before. Day one, though, we got busy. Like, we came in guns blazing, and this is what we're going to do, and we did it. Right? It's not mission done, right? It's still more, but look around, though. Look around town. I walked home the other day, and there was a waitress at the office, she came up to me, she said, "Oh, thank you so much. I feel safe about getting on the 70 bus to Irvington at night at like 2:00 in the morning." You know, I walked through the park, you could hear the grasshoppers, I mean, let's, you can't take that from this team, though, right? Like, we got busy. And, you know, working behind the scenes and everything, nah, we were right in the face, like, hey, this is what we're doing. I also couldn't help, I know it's, I know it's election time, but I also couldn't help thinking about my grandmother and watching soap operas, like, it's like, wow, you know, it's like days of our lives, I got a flashback, you know, rest in peace, Grandma. We, like, the Together for Summit thing, right? Maroon and gold. The Summit colors, by the way, are not maroon, gold, and white. I just want to let everybody know. It's maroon and gold. So, just to be clear on that. But the idea behind it, though, is that it don't matter if you're Democrat or Republican, you know, I'm here for you. Like, I enjoy this stuff. And you have to have some thick skin being up here. You could go back and rewind the tape, right? We talked about the resident protection ordinance, about 100 people here, and City Solicitor Jacoby, I wish you would have told the 100 people that directly spoke to me, all these meetings, that they could, they had to speak to the Council President, that would have been great. But yeah, the resident protection ordinance, right? 100 people coming in here, "Boyar, ah!", you know? And the, forget about the camping ordinance, right? Like, "Oh, Boyar, ah!", you know? You, listen, this is the job, right? Think about it hard before you want to get this job. Think about it, right? It ain't easy. It ain't easy sitting up here, taking criticism. But the criticism actually makes you better. It makes you better. Last but not least, I've said this before, I am a fan of this YouTube thing called Audit the Auditor, where they audit police officers, because I hold police officers to the highest esteem, and I think they all should follow the Constitution. So, when Mr. Anonymous came in, I was like completely used to all of that, because I watched Audit the Auditor. People have a right to come into meetings and say what they have to say, just like you got a right, certain rights, when you get pulled over, right? You have certain rights. And we expect that elected officials, our police officers and everyone, are obeying your constitutional rights. It's important. And if you can't deal with it, don't take the job. Thank you, Council President. Sorry.
Councilman Boyer, I do recall actually directing them, I think I was told to shut up, if you recall. That happens a lot, though, so I'm used to hearing that quite often.
You were, yeah, I remember that.
Thank you.
By a few people.
Other comments from council. Councilwoman Hamlet?
I'll be brief, because I have a child home that I have to, so I apologize if I'm not, on my way out of here, as I'm running out, but I have one at home who is asking when I'm going to be home, so I'll be brief. I would say that, you know, this election season has been, has been a little tough. They all are. But I think the most important thing is that all of us as leaders work to make it better for the next time. We all have, all of us up here, Michelle, Claire, we're not of the same party, but, you know, Claire, I've known you for probably 15 years. Claire and I used to play golf together, and, you know, we've known each other for a long time. So I think, as Jamelle said, it's our responsibility, excuse me, to change that culture. And I hope that everybody can do that, regardless of who's elected. I think that it's really important. It's bad, it's terrible for the municipal employees to watch what's going on. It's absolutely, it's sad. Rosie comes in every day, she's the first one here, last one out. Aaron Schreger has a meeting tomorrow at, you know, 6:00 AM, far away. The municipal employees are really, really busy, and we have a lot of stuff to do. And a lot of this is just a huge distraction from delivering municipal services to our residents. It's hard to actually get people to want to work for municipal government. And when they see the infighting's of Republican and Democrat parties, and, you know, the reality is, I've got a lot of Republicans, like I said, who are mad at me for Canoe Brook Parkway, and a lot of other things. Whether they still vote for me, that's up to them. I'm doing the best I can, and I'm trying to, trying to do what's right for the majority of residents on every issue, regardless of political party. That's what a good elected official does. So I would say that, you know, I look at all of us, Claire, Michelle, Jamelle, you know, to work together towards changing that culture. It's really, really important, and at some point, somebody just has to take control and say, "We're going to stop. We're going to stop this nonsense, we're going to hold each other accountable, we're going to be neighbors." That's what elected officials should be doing right now. I have a laundry list of things that we're, we need to get back to residents on. Regarding the intersection at Shoprite, I will give Nancy Munoz's office a lot of credit. They are working with DOT, and they are holding DOT accountable for helping us come up with a solution. I get updates from them frequently, and it is a tough intersection, but the residents that I speak to down there, it is very, very important. And even more important than that is getting an accessible way to, I shouldn't say more important, equally as important, to Bryant Pond. Because now that the pond is, looks so great, and we're going to get some new athletic facilities down there, hopefully even a playground, residents want to be able to walk there safely. So, that's a huge priority. So, Jacqueline, thank you for mentioning that one. The Salt Brook, I'm seeing some, some areas where I think that I might be seeing some light at the end of the tunnel. Some of the municipalities are getting together to hopefully look into a resiliency grant. Rosie, as a reminder, we're waiting for Director Schreger and Council President McTiernan to get access to that one house. It's really, really important that we can get ahold of that owner, because we want to get our, our portion of that Salt Brook stabilized. So I'm hopeful. Jamelle and Michelle, I'd like to get back to, actually spoke to him today, Mr. Dan Jaxel, and looking at that whole area, as you know, the people on Orchard, and that area, I think he's at 528 Morris, and maybe it is, or 28, 28 Morris, I think. We have to look at those traffic patterns down there. So, I think we put that in as a DAR, if we could just follow up, and I know it's going to take some time. Regarding the homeless, you know, we still have a long way to go, but I am proud, and so thank you for everybody who came for their comments tonight. Very proud and honored to have housed as many people. In fact, we got one more housed, I believe within the last 10 days, is that right, Mayor Fagan? I talked to Leah Griffiths today, we got one more housed, so I think that brings the number to 25. But even with those folks that we have housed, there's still challenges, we're still trying to make them a part of the community, find different resources for them. We still have a long way to go, and making sure that they're, you know, part of our community, it's incredibly important to stay on top of them. It's imperative that we just continue to find ways for them to integrate into the community and feel welcome, and look out for their well-being. So, just want to say thank you for everybody. I think everybody should, should put their, whatever they have out at this political season, and just, just try to enjoy Summit, try to enjoy neighbors, and try to bring some sense of civility back to the town, and I hope we can do that.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilman Pulowski?
Like sands through the hourglass, right? Okay, I have a statement that Councilman Smallwood asked me to read, and then I just have a couple of really quick comments after that. So this is Smallwood. "It was deeply inappropriate for Councilmember Kelmanson to use her position on the dais to publicly attack a private resident by name and accuse them of defaming everyone. Council meetings are not personal forums, they are official public proceedings, where elected officials are expected to maintain professionalism and respect. Residents have the right to speak, question, and even criticize their representatives without fear of being singled out or disparaged during a council meeting. That kind of rhetoric erodes public trust and discourages civic engagement. Disagreement is part of democracy, but elected officials have a higher duty to model restraint and integrity. Personal attacks from the dais, especially directed towards residents, have no place in Summit's public discourse." So hopefully that's the end of the soap opera tonight. The Verve, the school paper for Summit High School, has the money that they needed. So, I'll thank anybody who contributed, and if you still want to subscribe, read what some of our students are writing, I'm sure they'd love it. The dog park has been taken down. I know. We had to do it at some point this fall, in order to be able to properly clean up the leaves and take care of our grounds, and it really did take a beating. But we are working towards figuring out if we could do some more pop-up dog parks, or maybe get something that's permanent. I've talked about it before at council meetings, so I do apologize, we didn't get, well, I guess we got a message out a couple of weeks before we took it down, but I was under the impression it was going to be up until November. So I apologize to all those residents who I told could enjoy it until November, because I was wrong about that. Senior citizen prom was awesome. I want to thank everybody who put so much into it, Councilman Boyer, Councilman Smallwood, I think catered it. And who else was it? Karen, Karen Biggess?
Karen Eastman and Brad Olson, thank you for reminding me. And Betty and Desi and Cheryl Dagnor, and, you know, Wanda Fortune Commissioner, and Georgette Barnes Commissioner.
Yeah, it was a really heartwarming event, and if anyone has any interest in contributing, participating to something like that in the future, I know Councilman Boyer would like to maybe get something going a couple of times a year, maybe quarterly, so you can reach out to him, and he will, will help you help us. That's all I have. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Other comments from council?
Real quick, one gentleman came up to me that night, and he said, "You know, I don't know if I'm going to make it into heaven, but tonight might be the closest I ever got." And he said, "I haven't been in a suit in 25 years." And it was very, very moving.
So, Jamelle, nice work. And all the volunteers, I can't take credit for that one at all, so, great job.
Other comments?
The picture, Mike, with you and your wife, though, was amazing, like, y'all dancing, and I was like, "Look at this guy, with the bow tie."
Yeah, no, I appreciate the invite, it was amazing. I mean, I'll just echo it, that was, you know, you do this job, and, you know, you take a lot of incoming, it's part of the job, and I think a few people said it, it makes you better. It comes with the territory. Sometimes it's not so fun, but, but there are events every now and then, like that event, that I was so privileged to be invited to. It made you smile from, you know, ear to ear. It was just so great. And I thank you, Councilman Boyer, for setting that up, and Councilman Smallwood, who's not here, for, for doing the catering and such, and all the people at this, who live there, who just got involved, and it was just spectacular. Red carpet, you know, they had lights and music and photographer.
Putin ears.
Putin ears. It was just really, really special. The attention to detail that those people put into making that really amazing is great. But it does bring up, like, for the Summit Housing Authority that Councilman Boyer talks about, you know, sadly, with all the rent that those people pay, they don't even have a program director. You know, it's like, are you kidding me? You know, these little things that Councilman Boyer's really dug in, that, you know, it's just, it's, it's not unfortunate, it's, you know, bordering on, like, ineptitude, that they can't do this for these people. So, I appreciate you, Councilman Boyer, for, you know, bringing all this to light. It's important, they're an important part of our community, and they deserve better. They really do. Just a couple of other things, I want to thank Ms. Aricino and Mr. Zebra. It's always great to hear of improvements that we can make to our, our community from a safety perspective, so thank you for your comments, to the both of you. One thing I will just say around representation, I think, Diego, you talked about that a little bit, I don't look at it the same way. People up here represent everyone. If you don't, maybe you should think about why you're here. You know, I know everybody up here thinks that way. Everyone, R, D, it doesn't matter, that's why you're here. You know, I have meetings all the time with people I know didn't vote for me 10 years ago, and probably wouldn't vote for me now. That's okay, I represent them. They deserve to be listened to. Everyone in the community deserves to be listened to, and we represent the community. We don't represent a team. And I say that often, like, when we vote on things, the majority is whoever votes for it. Doesn't matter, you know, when, when, when Rosemary writes down, like, who voted for what, there's no R or D next to their name. They're council people, and that's the way it should be. We represent everyone, and I wish, I've said this on numerous occasions, that our local politics could calm down. To me, it's crazy. It's nuts. No one should spend as much time on local politics and being frantic and crazed about it as, as we do. It's not healthy. Hug your kid. Go to a soccer game. Do something, instead of typing on Facebook the entire time. It's nuts. That being said, I get it, you know, people get passionate about things. We have a couple more weeks. Go out and vote. Everyone should vote. It's a, you know, a lot of places in the world, you don't get that right. We do. Express your opinion peacefully through the ballot box. It is the best way to promote your views. So, I'm going to end it there. Okay? So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.